Good evening. My name is Jason Perro. I'm chairman of the Northborough Board of Selectmen, and I call to order this Monday, December 21st, 2020 meeting of the board. Before we proceed, we have some preliminary matter to get through for conducting a public meeting, so let me attend to that. This open meeting of the Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which is posted at the top of our agenda for tonight's meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. The meetings being conducted by the Zoom conferencing application as shown on the town's web, as shown on the agenda posted on the town's website, there are means of viewing the meeting are shown there. There's a live stream YouTube link. There's the Zoom webinar, which you can view. Also, a phone number to dial for the Zoom application. And additionally, you can view the meeting through cable access television government channels, Verizon Channel 30, Charter Channel 192. Just note that this meeting is being recorded. Attendees will be visible. We caution you that you're on view. Your comments are being recorded. Anything you broadcast will be captured by the recording. You may wish to mute your microphone when you're not speaking to avoid any intrusive noise. Ground rules for the meeting. As chairman of the board, I will work through the agenda, introduce each item, and have the speaker or the presenter present the item. Following that presentation, I will check with the board members, inviting each one for any comment, questions, or motions. Board members, please hold until your name is called. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair. We will be featuring public comment tonight. I will go over the details of that when we reach that part of the agenda. And finally, because we're conducting the meeting remotely, all votes taken in the meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. And that concludes that bit of business. The next thing we'll do is just check with the participants of the meeting to ensure that we have correct access for everyone. I'm Jason Perro, chairman of the Board of Selectmen. When I call your name, please indicate by voice to acknowledge. Vice Chair Tim Galen.
Present.
Clerk Leslie Rattan.
Present.
Board Member Julianne Hirsch.
Present.
Board Member Scott Rogers.
Present. Good evening.
Additionally, we have municipal staff members with us. Town Administrator John Codere.
Present.
Assistant Town Administrator Becca Meekins.
Present.
Department of Public Works Director Scott Sharpentier.
Present.
Town Finance Director Jason Little.
Present.
Town Police Chief William Liver.
Present.
And Town Fire Chief and Zoom Technology Assistant for our meeting, David Parenti.
Present.
And we are additionally connected to Northborough Cable Access for their assistance in delivering this meeting tonight. I think for the moment then, we can turn to the first agenda item, which is the approval of the November 23rd, 2020 meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'll move to approve the November 23rd meeting minutes.
Aka.
Moved by Scott Rogers, seconded by Leslie Rattan. Any discussion? Hearing none. This is a roll call vote. Scott Rogers.
Aye.
Julianne Hirsch.
Aye.
Leslie Rattan.
Aye.
Tim Galen.
Aye.
And I, Jason Perro, also vote aye. Takes care of that. And the next item, let's see. Going to bring in Harold Naughton. Is there anyone else joining us in conjunction with Harold's?
Not that I'm aware of.
I don't recognize any other names, right? So it's past the hour of seven o'clock, and this evening, we have Harold Naughton Jr., State Representative, to wish Harold well as he has not sought reelection in the latest campaign. So Hank, are you with us?
From here, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Just wanted to have you here with us tonight, Hank. We certainly appreciate all the efforts on your, on your part on behalf of the town over the years. Just to briefly summarize, Hank first served in the Massachusetts House of Representatives in 1995, has been serving there for a period of 25 years, representing the precincts number two and number four in Northborough as part of the 12th Worcester District. Those precincts would be essentially the, what we would know as the Lincoln Street and Z School precincts. Harold also has some military service in his background. I'll let him speak to that. Just a very accomplished period of time here. We certainly appreciate everything, Harold, and I'll just turn it over to you. You can start with name, rank, and serial number, and then continue.
Jason, Mr. Chairman, I greatly appreciate that, and through you and your members into the town, I really had hoped this could have been in person, but I know a lot of us hope that, and so many people have lost so many great memories this past year, graduations, weddings, so many things that it's a small sacrifice. So, but I want to thank you, and hopefully sometime in the new year, we can all gather in some way, shape, or form. And I appreciate the courtesy that you've extended to me tonight, and I promise to just take a few minutes, and I want to thank the people of the town of Northborough for the past 25, almost 26 years, come the first week of January. And at one point or another, I represented the entire town, from 95 to 01, I represent two-thirds of the town. From 02 to 11, I represented the entire town, and then population shifts and half the town since then. But the town's always been great to me. And I could go on all night about great memories. Actually, Jason, I was just looking at a sweaty picture of you and myself. I think it was at the Clarity Road Race, was it last summer or two summers ago?
A couple summers ago. That could be, yes.
If I started, if I started naming, naming names, but when I started out, I don't know that I knew five people in Northborough. And a late friend of mine, Steve Como, who'd been a funeral director in Clinton, brought me over to meet Tom Hayes, the dad. And then I got working in Northborough, and literally, the very first doors I knocked on, on May 24th of 1994, and I remember that because it was the week Jacqueline Kennedy Onassis passed away, were on Davis Street. And I remember that I figured I had been a lawyer, and a trial lawyer, and a prosecutor, and I figured I could handle myself among people. And I remember sitting in the corner of Davis Street and Fair Road with white knuckles on my, my steering rails, scared witless to start knocking on doors. And people were very, by and large, by and large, very friendly. But I was saved because one of the first doors I knocked on was a guy named Sean Naughton, who was off the boat from Spital Island, and I believe they moved out of the town long ago, but it made me feel a bit at home. And since then, I bet I've, between primaries and general elections, I think I've knocked every door in Northborough 20 times. You know, people become, constituents become friends, and friends become like family. And there's just so many good, too many good memories. Really, really develop such a deep affection for the town of Northborough. And, you know, summers were always bookended by the Memorial Day Parade, and then on one end, and the Apple Fest on the other end. And I'll just say, if it's not too obnoxious, I wouldn't mind one more invitation next year to, to march in both of those, if God, hope to God that we can get, get together again. We all get our vaccines. You know, Saturday afternoon stops at the Picard Post. I do, something I won't stop doing. I just ordered my prime rib roast from Tom Lo for Christmas Eve. But working with you, working, working with, I've lost count of the number of members of the Board of Selectmen that I've worked with in 26 years. And in, in, in working with you has, has always been great, whether we've agreed or disagreed on issues. It's always been professional and full of integrity, and a lot of times full of a lot of laughs. I'm very proud of my office in that we've always worked hard at constituent services and getting back to people quickly. And sometimes the answer was no, we couldn't help you, but we always would try to get back to people quickly. I always tried to train the staff to know that even though it might be the 100th call we're getting in a particular day, it's probably the, could be the most important call the person on the other end of the phone was making, or, or email. And emails are probably more like a thousand a day. And, and the same was with COVID. We, we have serviced over 800 constituents from the district since March with needs and unemployment, housing, healthcare, then a second wave of unemployment when everyone was starting to get defrauded. But on a broader scale, I like to think we've helped the town, you know, attracting businesses to both ends of the town, the crossings, businesses that we helped. We worked hard. I remember 1998, we had to work very hard to keep the national grid on, on Barefoot Road. They were being courted by out-of-state interests to take their facilities out of there. The liquor licenses, you know, on Main Street, I mean, go on. I mean, not looking for credit, this is all work we've done with you. The one thing you might have been able to share with me was the punch I almost took from our friend from SA Farms one day, who wasn't too thrilled about my, getting the Attorney General interested in, in his case.
Right, right.
We thank, we thank Ed DeVidian for stepping in between the two of us that day. But the representative of electoral coin will hit the ground running, and we'll do great work for you. But I also like to take the opportunity to thank you. I don't know that people realize how hard their town officials work. In these past nine months, the frontline workers from the fire department, the police department, and the, and, and the EMS, the EMTs, but all the other towns, all the town offices that worked hard to keep open, Andy Dowd and his staff, and the election they just ran. I mean, to any of the public listening, appreciate that. Appreciate the fact that you've got incredible people that step up into these jobs. And, and there's bumps in the road here and there, but you're incredibly lucky with the public servants that, that you've, you've been lucky to have step up on your behalf. And members of the Board of Selectmen, I mean, that's not a part-time job, if it ever was, maybe years ago, but I know for a fact, and people should know, that your job as, or members of the select board, please, no, I don't want to get in trouble. That job seeps into every single day of your life. You're doing something in the support of your town. And town administrators, second to none, John, second to none. Town administrators are the ultimate utility players on behalf of towns. And you, the town of Northborough has been incredibly lucky to have John at the helm for as long as you have. And it, and it shows. It's, I'll tell you how I know it shows, is the fact that you, all due respect to my other towns, you're incredibly easy to work with. And when budget time comes, and we're looking to file amendments, and, and try to get a little bit more for the district, Northborough's got its act together, and we know right where to go. But most of all, I do want to say thank you to the people of the town of Northborough for your kindness and affection and support over the years. And not just your support in elections and primaries, and that's incredibly important as well, because I couldn't have done the work that I've done without, without that support. But as I said before, constituents become friends, and friends become like family. And I started out by saying that I knew very, very few people in Northborough. It had just been district, put into the district, you know, you know, people in Clinton don't typically militate towards Northborough. And my mom and dad sat in my old campaign headquarters, which whoever come to Clinton is now the Clintons Bar and Grill. That was my campaign headquarters in 1994. And back then, campaigns weren't as sophisticated as they are, and people would sit with what we would call dear friend cards, which were pre-printed, but say, dear Dave, whatever the pre-print was, and then please vote for my friend Hank, and, and the sign built. My parents sat down, and this is how lucky I've been in life, and wrote out 4,000 of those cards. They took the voter list from Northborough, wrote a 4,000 of those cards to 4,000 households. They didn't know anybody. They just wrote, please, at the bottom, that please vote for our son. And to this day, I still run into people from the town who remember that, and that's why they voted the first time. They took a chance on me then. Hopefully I've, hopefully it's paid off. But the people have been incredibly supportive, not just in elections, when my kids were born, when I lost my parents, my pre-deployments, major deployments overseas, people checking in, the family, they've been good. The night before I left, some of you may have heard me tell the story before, for my first deployment in Iraq, I sat and had a couple of drinks with my father. And he himself was a World War II vet, had been through a lot, never talked about it, but we talked about the motivations for doing what we did, both in the military and in public service. And as we parted that night, and it was the last conversation I ever had with him, because I lost him while I was away, he said, never forget where you come from, and never forget those people that you've chosen to, to serve. So I hope he's looking down now, and he's happy with what I've done. I just want to say thank you. Merry Christmas. God bless, and I hope we see each other in 2021. Stay healthy. Take care.
Thank you very much, Hank. Appreciate all those words, and certainly a very, very moving moment that you described there, going off to serve your country at that point in time. Members of the board, any comments? Leslie?
Thank you, Jason. Hank, I just, it's hard to even know what to say. I've worked with you for enough years now that there's just a lot of great memories, and a lot of, just a lot of nice things to say about you. First of all, you stick out to, in my mind, as such a wonderful people person. And I don't think I can really say that about the great majority of people, quite frankly. You, you have a wonderful way about you. You're very astute, and you're very tuned in to the people who you have always served. And I want to thank you for your service to your country, and as a state rep. And your speech is what's, the other thing that sticks out of my mind is your speaking at our Memorial Day event, the Howard Street Cemetery. I know that you did your best to go around to a few towns on that particular day, and you made an effort to, to make it into Northborough and speak from the heart. And I was always very, very impressed by that, as was everybody else. I enjoyed marching with you in the various parades. And I want to thank you very much for attending our Board of Selectmen meetings over the years, with the delegation to, you know, listen to our concerns, maybe, you know, parade it occasionally, you know, some issues that affect Northborough in particular, not, they weren't always things that you could do things about immediately, but you always listened, you offered information, you always came back the next year. And we really, really always appreciated that. And we will miss you. You did a wonderful job, and you, you are a wonderful role model for everything that you have done for our community. So I want to thank you very much, and you're going to be missed.
Leslie, that's very kind of you to say. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other board members? Any comments? Very good. John, yes, please.
I can't, I can't let Hank leave without saying something. We worked together 18 years, Hank. 18 years in Northborough. And I will say that he is the most accessible, accessible state official that we have. Hank and I have had many phone calls, late evenings, weekends, anytime there's a storm or an emergency of some kind, where it's all chaos in the middle, I'd always get a phone call. I know you're busy. I don't want to bother you, but do you need anything? And that was a continuing theme through all the 18 years. Do you need anything? How can I help? And I'm going to miss the ease of the relationship, Hank, and I'm going to miss knowing that, you know, I can make that phone call, and I know I'm going to get a return call if you don't answer right away. I'm going to get a return call real quick. And even equally important, I don't think people will realize that the, the seniority and the clout that, that Hank Naughton has in the house over the years has allowed him to push for us in ways that the average person here doesn't see. But as staff, we see when we need to get a bill through, or we need to get a response from a state agency in order to help a constituent or an issue in town. That clout been priceless for us, and he's never failed to wield it in our favor and for our benefit. And for all those things, Hank, I just wanted to say thank you, and wish you well, and, and don't be a stranger.
Thank you, John. Look forward to seeing you again soon.
Hank, we, the board is going to be presenting a certificate of appreciation on behalf of the town, and I'd like to ask Leslie Rattan to please read that, as our longest-tenured board member, and the one you have worked with most closely.
Thank you. My pleasure to read this. The town of Northborough, Massachusetts, certificate of appreciation. The Board of Selectmen of the town of Northborough, on behalf of the citizens of Northborough, awards this certificate of appreciation to Harold P. Naughton Jr. for over 25 years of dedicated service to the town of Northborough while serving in the Massachusetts House of Representatives. His invaluable experience, wisdom, and support for the citizens of Northborough will always be remembered and appreciated. Dated at Northborough, Massachusetts, this 21st day of December, 2020.
That's wonderful. Thank you so much. That's very unexpected, but very appreciated. Means a great deal.
Thank you. Thank you for everything.
And I'll, I'll just, final, final thanks, Harold. Just tremendous appreciation for all you've done for us over the years. And certainly, there's going to be a standing invitation to you for our, our Memorial Day events. And we expect you in uniform.
As long as it keeps fitting me.
Uniform and, uniform and a few eloquent words, right? Certainly appreciate that. So I just want to finally thank you for your service to the town of Northborough. Thank you for your service to the district. Thank you for your service to the Commonwealth. And finally, thank you for your service to your country. All great accomplishments.
Very kind. Thank you so much, everyone. Please stay healthy. I hope to see everyone soon in person. I hope to die. Merry Christmas.
We should need the best. Yep. Take care.
Take care.
Good. Now past the hour of 7:05 PM, and we have Kristen Black, health agent for a COVID-19 update. Let me bring Kristen in. Hello, Kristen.
Oh, you brought two Kristens in, so.
I'm sorry. I have the wrong Kristen.
You have the right, then. You brought two in. You just need to bring.
Yep. I'm sorry. I'm going to promote to panelist here for Kristen Black. Should I have done that, chief?
Yeah, she should be promoted to panelist. That's where you want her.
Yep, okay.
Can you guys hear me?
Can hear you, can't see you, Kristen.
Oh, okay. Sorry. I just got to get.
There you are.
Okay. Hi there, everyone.
Hi.
Hello, Kristen. How you doing?
Hi, I'm great. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, for inviting me tonight. I look forward to giving you a quick PowerPoint presentation. And I just have to find my share screen, so bear with me a minute. All right. So are you okay to view that at this point?
Looks okay to me.
Okay.
I didn't know if you want to change that to slide presentation.
Oh, it's showing a slide for me. Let's see.
I, we do see the slide, but we also see like the, the note panel to the right.
Oh.
Some of that bit. So I didn't know if you want that or.
See, I don't. It's just viewing a little different on this computer, so bear with me a minute. Is that better?
Yep, that looks good. I assume, chief, you can, we're capturing this completely?
Yeah.
Okay. Great. So I just want to briefly walk you through some updates, since I think I was here maybe visiting with all of you about a month ago. So I'll walk you quickly through our case counts, risk status, talk a little bit about the website updates since we last spoke, talk about the recent rollback to our Phase Three Step One, and the additional restrictions that were implemented by the state. I'll talk about our recent business outreach, COVID-19 testing in our area, some holiday recommendations, and the updates on our COVID vaccine in Massachusetts, and also just a little bit about contact tracing and some expanded services we're looking to add with SAM and VNA. So right now, our risk status and weekly case counts, the table that you're seeing on this screen, this is sourced from the Mass Department of Public Health Weekly Public Health Report. This is released every week on a Thursday around 5:00 or 6:00 PM. So I take some of this data, and, and we put it on the website. We do a hyperlink. So that, I don't know if you've all had the time to look at this very expansive weekly report by the state, but it is packed with everything from data on clusters to hospital capacity broken down by region, and then there's also town-specific data. So overall, what we're looking for, and we talked, I think, a bit at our last meeting, what color is the town of Northborough? Where are we on this risk category? So at this point, we are rated at a high level of risk. That's been for the last two weeks. And that revised metric from the state is based off of two factors. The first factor is just total case count, so they'd be looking at how many we receive. There was like per 100,000 over 19, a 14-day period. We are far exceeding that number. I think it was around 19 in a two-week period. You can see this report, most recently as of last Thursday, our total average daily incidence was 86.9. So that number is really high. We're actually sort of at our highest peak we've seen for the whole pandemic. For the two-week period, the last 14 days, we've seen 165 new cases. If you all think back to the summer, we were seeing one to two cases a week, maybe, in August. And in this last two-week period, we saw 165. So it's really important for everyone to realize just how many more cases we have in town. The risk is just much higher. And we will talk through some of the steps that we're recommending everyone to take around the holidays. So another factor that the state looks at with determining our risk level is the percent positivity rate. And so for every 100 tests that they do for COVID-19, you know, how many come back positive? So this is saying in 100 tests, approximately 6.3% of those tests are coming back positive. Again, really big jump here. really big jump here. Um back in the summer, we saw, you know, percent positivity rates as low as uh even under one or one percent. Um and then as of tonight, just even since this report um last week on Thursday, our case count was five hundred and eighty-five. As of tonight, we've jumped up to six hundred and fifty-one. So on average, um we're seeing about ten new cases today. Um it was a little troubling today that we're probably closer to, you know, fifteen in a day, but those numbers are are way up there. So to more clearly put this all in sort of one graph that could be shared on social media, um we created this, I guess it was just our second week last week, so we went red. So everything's in this one graphic here that's on our town's webpage. So again, and we're at a high-risk level. Total case count with that late, that last um update on December seventeenth was six hundred and nine total cases since the start of the pandemic. The active number of cases at that time. So how many people in our community are currently um have COVID, they're confirmed with a PCR test, and they're still considered infectious. So within that ten-day isolation period we typically think of, and again, a hundred and sixty-five cases over the fourteen days, the percent positivity is there. And then just the relative change in the case count number, you can see it's noted higher. And again, anything with an asterix, that's sourced from our weekly report from the Mass Department of Public Health. Um also, this is just showing a line graph that's on our homepage. Um I pull this together every week. You could just see again, you know, we're well above or beyond the peak we saw with the total number of cases each week. Um we dropped down a little bit last week. Um so the week ending on December twelfth, we were at seventy-one new cases in a week. So ending on the Sunday, but the week sort of just after Thanksgiving, ending on December fifth, from all that Thanksgiving testing, we ended up with ninety-four new cases in a week. So again, much higher than that spring peak we saw um back when we were a high of thirty-eight. And that was um back around April. And so again, here's the age cohort graph. So I take that two-week period that's reported in the state's most weekly report and um and I just put that into a bar graph. So you can just uh better understand sort of where we're seeing the cases. And so early on, remember the spring, we saw a lot of cases at our long-term care facilities as an older demographic, an age cohort. And now you can see we're much more distributed across all age categories. It seems like our um anyone over seventy might be taking, playing it really safe and um taking precautions. Um they're less likely to go to work, have those exposures. Um and so we're seeing much lower rates at that seventy um and over-age category. And we're seeing, you know, it creep up in in school-age children as well. Um so just some brief updates to the town's website. So on the homepage again, we put that weekend numbers graphic, the line graph in the cage, uh age cohort graph that I just showed you. Um we also added a testing webpage with links to the Free Stop the Spread sites. We're answering a lot of questions about where do I get a test? And so that was updated and there's more information in a a slide um later on. Um we also added a page for new isolation and quarantine webpage, and that has the new quarantine guidelines. So you may have heard that the state of Massachusetts, um they uh offered a few options to test out early from that standard fourteen-day quarantine for close contacts. It's very confusing. The rules are confusing period. Um and then they keep changing. So we're keeping that isolation quarantine webpage up to date. And for any resident, if it doesn't make sense to you, um please call the Health Department and we're here to help you um be able to calculate those dates when you be considered infectious, when you could return to work and if you need a return-to-work letter. Um anyone who um is diagnosed with COVID with a positive PCR test should receive a call from a local public health nurse or the Community Tracing Collaborative to um talk them through the isolation and quarantine of any other close contacts. And again, we added a new vaccine webpage link that I'll talk about later on. Um so again, here's just a graphic. It's a screenshot of our homepage. We also updated our news and announcement um on this page, so it's just specific to COVID, whereas before it would show sort of all-town news and highlights. Um just a little bit about this recent statewide rollback um that took place. It was effective on December thirteenth at twelve oh one. Um this was the entire Commonwealth moved to this Phase Three Step One, where before we were hearing of just red communities or higher risk communities would would step back from Step Two to Step One, but now the entire state has done this. Um its outdoor gatherings are now limited to fifty, whereas they were a hundred before. Um some other noteworthy um changes were a reduction in capacity in several industries such as office spaces, gyms, libraries, places of worship. Um it, they went from fifty percent occupancy to forty percent, so not a huge change. Um some changes you may notice um is related to restaurants. These were some other restrictions um regarding both face coverings now that are clarified that um in restaurants, unless you are actively seated, eating, and drinking, um your mask should be on. So if you are just entering a restaurant um seated at a table waiting to take an order or you finished eating um and you're waiting for your check, you should put your mask on and obviously anytime you leave your table. Um their seating capacity was from ten per table to six. And the state is actively encouraging dining uh customers to only dine with their same household. So it's really not recommended anymore to meet someone from another household and engage in an outdoor dining experience. There's also a ninety-minute uh time limit on tables in restaurants and all musical performances are prohibited at this point. Uh additionally, there were some uh restrictions to workplace and fitness centers. And so that was regard to mask-wearing is now required all the time um in workplaces, uh or sorry, in fitness centers specifically. So before it used to state that if you were in a gym and you were fourteen feet apart, you could take your mask off. Now it's masks all the time in the gym. So even if you're fourteen feet apart, um it's required all the time. There's also clarification in offices that um unless you're in your own workspace, it's still not perfectly defined, but that you should have your mask on. So if you're in a shared workspace with multiple desks in the same area, you should be wearing your mask um at all times. And again, the governor and the state orders are require, uh encouraging teleworking or working from home. Um just a little bit about our business outreach. Um I think since we last spoke, we did hold a webinar with Northborough businesses. Um so uh the Town Administrator John was um a part of that and pulling that together. Um I presented on some of the COVID um specific changes uh for our businesses, and we also invited Karen Chapman, who is President/CEO with Corridor Nine, Four Ninety-Five Regional Chamber. Presented, and that was great. She was able to speak more to um business resources and loans and those sort of things. So it was, we're trying to connect our our businesses to other resources. And so the slides for that presentation and the recording are available on the COVID nineteen webpage under the business our Resources for Business specific webpage. Um so we uh talked about the rollback, the new restrictions. Um we're recently emailed to all of our businesses when that was released. So we do have a business email distribution lister that was made from all of our businesses in town through all of the licenses we issue. Um anyone who registered for the webinar. So we have over two hundred businesses listed, so we're trying to directly contact them, email them. Um we're updating the Resources for Business webpage weekly. And again, the Health Department is always available um to assist businesses with their plans and responses. So businesses are expected to report cases of positive employees. We work with them to make sure that they're following um the quarantine and isolation guidelines and um assist them and um in connecting them to resources as well. So just a little bit about our COVID nineteen testing. So again, um we have a webpage of the links at the bottom here in blue on our town's webpage to the Stop the Spread sites is one of the links. That's really important. So everyone should realize there are free local um sites. You don't need to have insurance or or be exposed or for any reason. So anyone can go to those sites. It's worth noting that two of the sites in Marlboro recently closed. Um one of these was the AFC location many of you may have heard of. Um we were sending people there. So although that's still open, it's not a stop the spread. So you do need to um either pay out of pocket or use your insurance if it qualifies. And there was a um AIDS Project Worcester site in Marlboro as well that's closed. So we we are seeing a reduction in overall testing, which is a bit frustrating. Um but it's important to note that COVID nineteen testing should be covered under insurance for anyone who's symptomatic or um has been exposed to someone with COVID. So if they're called a close contact. So we always uh want to recommend residents to contact their primary care provider. Um many providers have relationships for testing. They can get you appointment and save you some long lines. And again, it should be covered by your insurance if you're symptomatic or a close contact. Um and there are also our sites in Massachusetts for uninsured um individuals, and those would be free. So I believe um CVS or Walgreens, not in our town, but in other towns, offer free testing. And all of this you can check out at the COVID nineteen test site locator. Again, it's linked to our our uh testing webpage. And there you can search by ages, if sure, insurance is accepted, if it's free for uninsured, the types of tests, if it's a drive-through. Um so that's a really important link. And so just be really careful for everybody. Testing sites are changing all the time. Some test centers may require appointments, et cetera. So check that list. It changes frequently. Um we have some holiday recommendations that came from the Mass Department of Public Health. It's really important right now um for everyone to remain vigilant and to adjust their holiday plans to protect the health and safety of their loved ones. Um first off, the DPH is clearly stating to limit in-person celebrations to only household members. So while you may have dined and and um survived Thanksgiving unscathed, um the rates are much higher and it's really important that people limit those in-person celebrations to household members. Also, the state is recommending you postpone or cancel travel this holiday season, or if you do travel, please be aware and comply with the Massachusetts Travel Order requirements. And also, please follow the uh current state gathering size limits and sector-specific workplace safety standards. And all of those are found on our website. Um there's also more information on lower risk versus higher risk celebrations and activities and other recommendations. And again, that's on the state's um December holiday guidance link, and that's off, linked off of the town's COVID page as well. Um just a little bit, I'll briefly speak about the COVID nineteen vaccine in Massachusetts. So this is all new. The state, um I guess unveiled this maybe a week or two ago. Um it's a great website, mass.gov forward slash vaccine. Um sort of this graphic I pulled off the state's website. This is what everybody wants to know is when can I get the vaccine? Um so December through approximately February, this is where we're gonna see our first responders. Any of their clinical and non-clinical healthcare workers who are direct and um doing that direct COVID-facing care, long-term care facilities, um et cetera, congregate care facilities, home-based healthcare workers. Um and anyone who's doing um healthcare workers who are doing non-COVID-facing care as well. So it's the way the list works in this graphic. Top of the list is the first to receive it. So that's why we're hearing about vaccines in our hospitals. Our first responders are police, fire, and emergency medical services are sort of the third bullet here that's coming. Um one update is the Town of Northborough, we're not planning on in-house with our public health nurses hosting a clinic for first responders, but we're networking and um we've signed up with Westbro who's planning to offer a first responder clinic and is put in to receive the vaccine, has the capability to do so. So they're anticipating that vaccine to be available to our police and fire sometime in the first or second week in January. More to come on that. Um I'm working closely with the police and um fire department to make sure we get our first responders um vaccinated as soon as it's available. Um the phase two is where um you know, we're gonna see more of the general public, public come into play. So individuals with two or more comorbidities um so in their high risk for COVID nineteen complications. So for individuals, you may know loved ones that are higher risk or have these comorbidities or or medical conditions that leave them to be more susceptible to illness or at higher risk of illness. You know, this is the time that they may want to reach out to their primary care uh provider or their doctor to um ask if they meet that definition. We don't really have all the details about how the documentation will work, but that's something that individuals um should discuss with their doctor. And then we'd move on to early education, K through twelve, um grocery, utility, food, agriculture, um public works and uh public health workers would be next in line. Uh filled sixty-five and over, and then individuals with one comorbidity are at the end of Phase Two, and that window is estimated at February to April. And then on April to June, we move on to Phase Three, more general public. Um if you're following the news closely, you know, they still are moving through the Phase One through Three trials need to take place for anyone under sixteen. So more to come as to when children um would be approved to receive the vaccine. So uh just a little bit on contact tracing and expanded services from SAM and VNA. So you all may be aware, we don't have a public health nurse who sits in Town Hall. We contract those services and have for a very long time with SAM and VNA. Um with the recent surge, um we've had a need for more um public health nurses. So we're working with SAM and VNA. Um they're looking, they are in the process of hiring more nurses. Um we're looking to um do an amendment to our contract to allow, and this would all be covered under the CARES Act. Um so we can have more nurses that are specifically working with just the Town of Northborough to make sure we can provide the most prompt um response to anyone who's um currently has COVID and the contact tracing of identifying all their close contacts and providing that uh quarantine guidelines. So uh SAM and VNA has been great. Um we're working with our lead nurse, Anne Labonte, as they bring on more staff, and we'll be looking to expand our services under that contract and working with the town managers or town administrator's office. Um some cases have been, especially in that big surge, we had ninety-one cases in a week, have been referred to the Community Tracing Collaborative. And I just want to note um that, you know, for any of this, we're really encouraging all residents to answer the call. Um if you go for a COVID test, you know, I have heard sad stories where people go, they get a test, they just didn't check their voicemail for a week, and we've been trying to reach them to let them know. So you know, the number you provide when you go to get your COVID test is the number we will call if we find out that it is a positive result. Um and so it's really important, answer the call. Um and so this graphic at the bottom is off the Community Tracing Collaborative websites, or encouraging everybody to answer the call. Um so that's really it on the topics I was covering on COVID. I just wanted to provide a one final slide and a quick pitch that we are um looking to begin a Sharps disposal program for residents. Um this will start in January of two thousand twenty-one. This um is a service that many surrounding towns have offered, and and we really want to make sure we're supporting our residents with this as well. So um excuse me, this again is open to Northborough residents, and this is just for home Sharps. So businesses, tattoo artists, parlor, doctors' offices, veterinarians, you know, this is not for them. This is for individuals who um might be diabetic uh or something like that at home where they do generate Sharps and they need to dispose of them properly. So with the waste ban, you can't put them in the regular trash. So um the Sharps must be in these approved containers or the red container you typically see at a doctor's office. Um they come in all different sizes. We will have a limited number um free for residents. And we'll be accepting the Sharps uh by appointment at Town Hall. And again, there'll be more coming out on that new program. So that is it for my presentation.
What, you mean there's not more? Uh Kristen, I want to thank you very much. Uh in in a very short period of time, you've really kind of taken the reins on all of this kind of information uh and coordination of all of these uh um various uh things that relate to COVID nineteen uh support and information and everything. Just a fabulous job. I just wanted to upfront thank you for all of that. It's been very impressive uh to see all this put into place, so. Um, any uh questions by the board?
Yeah, I've got one, Jason.
Scott, yep.
Yeah, thanks, Kristen. Just a quick question. Are you also um tracking the surveillance testing that's done uh with school staff and town staff?
Yes, so I work closely with Mary Ellen Duggan, and she's our Wellness Coordinator with the Northborough Salisbury Schools. Um so Mary and Ellen and I are in daily communication. Um so I do know that most recent round of testing. So I think they were tested over six hundred with this last Friday. Again, the testing they're offering on Fridays, which is just open to um staff at this point. Um but they, actually, they, right now, even today, they started with testing the students. So our, um I believe our juniors and seniors um at the high school were tested. But yeah, so that most recent round, I'm in communication with Mary Ellen because she gets the cases and she calls me and we make sure we correctly um communicate with our nurses. So the great news was last week as of Friday, there were over six hundred tests, I believe administered, only one positive. And that was for a individual who was already identified as a possible close contact with an exposure. Um so it appears to be working and and that was really great news to see that our teachers are healthy. And um and our, although we're seeing a really high rate in the community, you know, we're not seeing that high rate through the schools again. We've had that one case, um one individual possible in-school transmission, but um the schools do all the hard work, so they deserve all the credit on that fabulous testing. Mary Ellen just keeps me in the loop.
Uh thank you for the update.
You're welcome.
Uh any other questions by the board? Leslie?
Yes, Kristen, thank you very much. Very informative and the graphics are fantastic. I appreciate the presentations that you do.
Okay.
Um, quick question for you about testing. Uh if I see anything on social media, it's it's people complaining about access to testing. People getting frustrated, I don't know where to go, who to call. Uh do I need an appointment? When do I find out? All that kind of thing. So I'm glad that you're providing information on the website, and I hope that people do go there and and take a look at that. The other question I had about, well, the question I had about that is, one, do you envision uh better testing accessibility? Do you envision the state trying to do a better job of providing free testing um at more locations? And two, uh do you feel that testing will gradually disappear? I mean, obviously, we've got the vaccine coming up. But will people still want to test or feel that they should test, just to be sure? But will people still want to test or feel that they should test just to be sure that they are in fact immune?
Right. No, those are great questions. I think testing right now or the, um, difficult, you know, the difficulty for our residents to access testing is so frustrating. Um, you know, I've had many conversations with John. Um, we even have been looking into options for offering just within the town, using our CARES Act funding to say, how could we open up our own testing center? Unfortunately, although the state made a document to instruct, you know, towns how they can do it, it's very expensive. And so at this point, the state has been saying they do not plan to open any more stop the spread free sites. You know, we, we knocked on the door and said, please come do one in our town. We'll give you whatever you need. Um, and they really weren't planning to. They did open a new high throughput. I think if the company is called Beacon out of Framingham. So that's supposed to be, you know, ability to offer more testing. But that's already booked out and you can't even find appointments. So it's definitely frustrating. So if we were to go through the option of trying to offer that in-town testing. Um, using the state's approved vendor list, it's over, it's it's around a hundred dollars a test. Um, and so you can imagine, although where CARES Act money is great, it's a lot of money. Um, we would quickly burn through that. So the value of standing up a test center to blow through it in a week and a half, it doesn't get us that big end game right now that we really want to see. So we'll continue to engage the state in that conversation. I've heard that our best lab for testing um, in our areas, the Broad Institute, they're turning around test results in around twenty-four hours. And while their tests may only cost around twenty-five dollars to process there, it's about getting the vendor to do the whole administration, to gear up with the proper PPE, to be approved to test for children. Adults to set it all, it all up. So, um, I did have a conversation with the Worcester AIDS Project that recently closed in Marlboro. So we're trying to say, is there a way we can leverage some of the CARES Act funding and look at this? And I think other municipalities are trying to do the same. There is, um, you can use some of the CARES Act funding to purchase these kits. I don't know if you've heard of communities where they're pre-purchasing like an at-home kit and then you mail it out. But unfortunately, more, the company I believe that's offered on the state vendor list, that doesn't go to the Broad Institute. It goes to another lab. So it really doesn't help our residents if we give them a mail order kit and they don't get our answer for forty-five days. I mean, at that point, it's sort of like defeats the whole purpose. You know, your doctor's office is more likely, if they can get you in to turn it around quicker. So um, testing is very frustrating. We'll continue to talk to surrounding communities and, and to push the state. But I, um, the state, it does not sound like they're going to come to the rescue or expand testing at this point. Stop the spread even as of right now. It's only scheduled to continue to run through January fifteenth. Um, hopefully with the new, you know, federal approval of funds and, you know, the big nine ninety billion dollars, um, they'll be able to guarantee and keep those programs going. So I'm hopeful, you know, the federal news that we might see expanded testing now that the state has a guarantee. But they haven't committed to it, you know, as of this week, but I'm, I'm hoping we'll have some more information on Tuesday. Um, your second question about the vaccine and, and will, will we still have that need to test and? And I think, you know, just thinking of children, um, well, one, first off, let me just say the vaccine, it's great news. You know, it's the hope we've all been waiting for. Um, but it's not a hundred percent effective. It's ninety percent effective if you get the two boosters. And we're hoping people after they have their fatigue and the mild flu symptoms you get when you're developing antibodies, go back for that second booster. So that, you know, getting that is really important. Getting that, the individuals that are vaccinated are up to that ninety percent. But you know, you could be the ten percent, right? So, you know, knowing that you have it. And so the other thing is they're not sure, even if you have a vaccine, you still may, although you may not get sick with COVID because you have antibodies. You still may be able to give it to somebody else. So you don't want to give it to your loved one who's the ten percenter, right? That, you know, they, they got the vaccine. So there's really no guarantee here. Um, the goal, and again, to go back, children are going to be even longer waiting because we have to get through the approval. So unfortunately, you know, the big picture is COVID will stop its cycle when we get that herd community, herd immunity. Um, but that's going to take that, what, sixty-five, seventy and upward percent of the population to have immunity, not just to have the vaccine. So the state's, you know, targeting over eighty percent of the population to receive the vaccine. So unfortunately, testing is something we're going to need for foreseeable future. You know, I don't see contact tracing, you know, really slowing down then. I would say the end of the summer, maybe next fall, assuming everything's still on target. Um, you know, because we are going to have a large proportion of the population without the vaccine. And then you're always going to have that. It's not a perfect vaccine. You don't have a hundred percent.
Wow, exactly. Right. Perfect. Okay. I really appreciate you addressing all these issues. Thank you.
Sorry, I was on mute. Uh, Julian, had you had a question earlier?
No, my question was answered. Thank you.
Great. Uh, John?
Yeah, if I can just add and stress, first of all, Kristen's doing a great job for us. Uh, if you're looking for information, I know it's tough. Uh, the, the website is updated minimally weekly, uh, but oftentimes multiple times a week. If there's new information that comes out from the state, generally that day or within twenty-four hours, uh, that information is being updated. The website, the, the town's COVID website that was in the slides, uh, that Kristen showed you, that's the place to go to get the latest information. And if you do have, uh, testing questions or you do have a, a, a question about the, the COVID in general, you can contact the Board of Health. Kristen will walk you through. She doesn't know the answer. She'll get you to, uh, the source that you need to. Um, the, the other thing I just wanted to stress to folks is um, it is heating up. Okay, there are a lot of cases around not just Northborough, but, uh, across the Commonwealth. It is having an impact on our operations. Uh, this week I sent the board, or the end of last week, I sent the board of selectmen an update that we have modified our continuity of operation plans in the town of Northborough. Um, COVID is impacting every single thing that we do every day. Now, for so, for those of you that might be able to remote work and, uh, and it works for you, that's great. Um, but I want you to please keep in mind that you can't remotely respond to a public safety emergency with a police. You can't remotely respond to a fire or a medical emergency and you can't remotely plow snow. You know, Hank Norton mentioned police and fire. Uh, as far as I'm concerned, pu- public safety is the third leg of that stool. Um, a- as far as, as far as us being able to respond and take care of our residents. And, uh, so we have implemented some additional, uh, steps and measures. Um, but we, we do, we have staff out right now that are COVID positive. And we have staff right now that are quarantining. And I want you to keep this in mind. Police, fire, DPW, those are our big departments. Then we have the library. All our other departments are basically two people. It's a department head and an admin. Maybe there's three people in the treasurer's office, right? But that's where we are. We're splitting up and we're dividing up our staff right now. We're working remotely. Some of these administrative jobs and some of these roles that we have don't lend themselves well to remote work. So uh, things are taking a little bit longer. It's, uh, it's putting in, uh, an extra burden on staff to be able to coordinate and to be able to respond to residents' concerns and, and needs. And I just, it's having an impact for us. Uh, you know, we want to make sure that the residents are safe. Want to make sure that our employees are safe and we want to make sure that in a priority order, we're responding to the things that we need to do. You need to be able to be safe, uh, you know, respond to fires, medical emergencies, safety issues. You need to make sure that we turn on the faucet, the water comes out. And when you flush the toilet, it does what we all want it to do, go away. Right? And get treated. And, 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 um, you know, all of this stuff is, uh, can't be done remotely. So the nature of the work that we do as a municipality, the vast majority, except for the administr- some of the administrative end, which is a very small piece of our staff and what we do has to be done in person and, and people need to physically be present to, to perform those tasks. So uh, again, it's had a tremendous impact. Uh, we spend, you know, I probably spend twenty percent of every day working on COVID in some, uh, some fashion. Um, we've been, uh, we've had to issue and revise and reissue, uh, personnel policies in real time for, for dealing with the situations. We have, Becca's been, uh, the assistant town administrator has been phenomenal. Um, I've sent some of those policies. You can see returning to work, travel, testing, uh, protocol, all that stuff. Now, a lot, I know people in the private sector have those things too. Um, but the difference is again, we have to be here. Uh, and our folks need to be here and it's having a tremendous burden. And like all of us, just the sheer duration of this, you know, usually you have a storm or an emergency. We're used to dealing with an emergency and managing through it in a week or two weeks and coming out the other side. You know, nine months later, it seems like things are harder and more difficult right now than they were frankly at any other point. And so I just hope that, I know the board appreciates that, but I just hope that the residents out there hearing these discussions and seeing the information that's coming out, that they take it seriously and understand that, uh, that we're, we're trying to provide and keep them safe, um, and still function. Uh, so everything is just added, an added burden to all of the processes that we have here. So again, patience and understanding is greatly appreciated.
Great. Thank you, John. Uh, Kristen, any, um, any final words in terms of, uh, recommendations or guidance for this upcoming, uh, holiday season? We, uh, um, uh, we're, it's just about upon us. For some of us, it's already in progress. For others, it's about to, uh, approach. For yet others, I'm just, uh, wondering if you have any specific, uh, recommendations in that regard?
Yeah, I just think, you know, it's closer to home than it's ever been. I think everyone probably on this call can think of someone they know of, you know, a contact. I think even Thanksgiving, it wasn't as close to home. I received a a Christmas card from family in England and a little insert about how they lost their sister-in-law and how terribly she suffered and, um, and just how it's really wreaked havoc on their family. And so I just hope everybody really remembers that. This will be one Christmas of many. And, um, this is really the time to lock it down and really do the right thing for the ones you love. Although it doesn't feel right. So all this virtual this and that, it's, it's not the same. But, um, please change those behaviors to protect the ones you love and let's all reunite and have a great summer. Um, and, and really just get through this surge right now. It really just couldn't be a worse time. Um, with the indoor setting and, um, and we all just, you know, family's what's important. So hug the ones you can in your household and do everything else, um, you can virtually with the, the other ones or, or really the state has provided some other low-risk options and start a family hike outdoor experience or gift giving in the driveway or whatever it takes. But, you know, avoiding that indoor exposure, especially, um, eating with non-household members is just so crucial. And so I wish you all a happy holiday and thank you again for this opportunity to speak to you all.
Thanks, Kristen. Very much, Kristen. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, next, it's well past the hour of seven ten PM and we have Liz Tretiak, Senior Center Director, Acceptance of Grant from Metro West Health Foundation for Programming That Will Combat Senior Social Isolation Over the Winter. Uh, let's see. And bringing you in now, Liz. Hello, Liz.
Hello.
I've just announced your agenda item, Acceptance of Grant from Metro West Health Foundation. Uh, would you care to take us through that?
Yes, um, thank you. Um, good evening, board. Thanks for having me here, uh, this evening. Uh, I just wanted to say that since the very beginning of this pandemic, we've constantly been having to reinvent ourselves here at the senior center, reinvent our programs, really, um, do a sharp pivot on what we're doing here. Creating programs outside of these walls of this building has been a challenge. So we've been doing everything we can to reinvent. Uh, virtual program, programs have been a key factor to keeping our seniors engaged. So this fall, the Metro West Health Fan Foundation put out a call for grant proposals to work on decreasing senior isolation. So we put together a proposal to not only decrease isolation, uh, the feelings of isolation, but also build social connections and resiliency. Our proposal uses the expressive arts, which are music, movement or dance and art to create new ways to engage our seniors. The grant that we wrote has two parts. The first part uh, funds the instructors for the classes who will provide an interactive virtual experience. And the second part of this grant provides funding to purchase technology such as iPads, headphones, external speakers, whatever it takes to ensure equal access to anyone who wants to participate. So I'm here tonight to respectfully request that the board considers accepting the building social connections and resiliency in seniors through the expressive arts grant in the amount of nine thousand two hundred sixty-eight dollars. And if you would like any additional information about what we're doing here at the senior center, I'd be more than happy to share what we're doing.
Great. Thank you, Kristen. I'm sorry, Liz. Uh, any questions by the members of the board?
Yep, go ahead, one.
Yes, Scott?
Hi Liz, uh, thanks for that. Just a, uh, clarification that the grant money was through Northborough and to Council of Aging, but then some of the equipments also then, um, kind of distributed and shared to some members that are in Hudson and Marlboro?
Yes, so, um, we wrote this grant in collaboration with, um, the town of Hudson Council on Aging and the Marlboro Council on Aging. So what we're doing is the, um, classes will be open to Northborough, Hudson and Marlboro seniors. Um, we'll each reserve portion of the, um, attendance for the three towns and then each town has a set amount of technology that they'll receive.
That's great. Thanks for expanding it across, across the towns like that. That's awesome.
It, it just provides a, a better, um, a broader range of people who can connect.
Uh, any other questions, board members? Leslie?
Not really a question or comment. I think that's wonderful. And I was just at, going to ask the same thing that Scott just did. Um, that it was sixty yeah, a total of sixty seniors across the three towns. And I think it's a nice variety. It sounds like dance, movement and music focus. I think that's that's terrific because I'm sure there are a lot of experiences that, that all of those seniors have had over their lifetimes that something will appeal to them, something they can continue. Um, if it's a couple living in a home, I assume they would get just the one iPad between to share?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. This is wonderful. Thank you very much for, for being involved with this.
Thank you. It's been fun to create, um, the, the first class that we will be starting. Um, once this is approved fully is a restorative yoga class, which falls into the movement category. Um, it's a short half-hour class for seniors and it really focuses on um, the meditation aspect, the breathing, not so much on focus of the yoga poses. But it, it's really the mind-body connection. I, I think it's going to be a fun project.
That's wonderful. I bet that'll continue. I could see some of them wanting to continue some of that.
Yeah.
After this is all over. It's nice. Thank you.
Uh, any other questions? Uh, Liz, while we have you here, um, perhaps you could, uh, just briefly recap some of, uh, recent activities or events that the senior center has done, just to give people a flavor of, uh, how you've adapted to the current circumstances?
Sure. Uh, thank you. Uh, so since the fall, we started a second wave of outreach, um, calls to our seniors. We decided this time around on our large-scale outreach initiative that we would just do over the age of eighty. So we're just wrapping that up now and we've placed almost four hundred calls. Um, and the general consensus is that people are very grateful for the calls. People are doing well. They're hunkered down. They are frustrated. They are bored and lonely. Um, but we haven't run into any major crisis, knock on wood, thankfully so far with our over eighty population. We're still regularly contacting our at-risk and vulnerable residents, um, on a set basis for each person. And we have a pretty active friendly voices program to contact any senior who um, just feels lonely or isolated and just wants a social call. We're doing, um, that program as well as a pen pal program with some high school students. Um, in addition to the large-scale outreach that we're doing, our outreach department is still operating as it normally would, even though Jocelyn, our wonderful outreach worker, has to do, um, some remote work. Um, since, uh, in, over the past five months, I think it is, she's placed over six hundred outreach contacts and that's just the routine business of fuel assistance applications, um, home care requests, health insurance questions, things like that. So we're still operating as normal, even though the doors are closed. Um, and I just mentioned health insurance, but I did want to put in a plug for the SHINE program, which is serving health information needs of everyone. Uh, this is a free program for, and it's we, it's volunteers who do this program. So anyone who has a health insurance question can come to the senior center or in this case now phone us or Zoom us and our SHINE counselors can help them. So as you know, open enrollment season just ended, December seventh. It was the calls were fast and furious here. Our one SHINE counselor, uh, we have two, Pauline and Sue, but Pauline herself um, assisted a hundred and eighty-six seniors and saved them six- um, assisted a hundred and eighty-six seniors and saved them sixty-seven thousand dollars on their health insurance plans. It's just an incredible program and it's no cost. And people can still call now and start preparing for when they turn sixty-five or have questions about what um, their pharmacy coverage is. In addition to that, we're still doing our transportation. The vans are still on the road. Um, July to November, we've done over twelve hundred rides so far. We're still getting people to their doctor's appointments, getting them to the grocery store, the pharmacy, one rider at a time on the vans, cleaning it thoroughly between each person. Drivers behind the Plexiglas, safe as possible. We just hired a brand-new driver who started um, this week, so we're thrilled. We can expand a little bit more with our transportation. And then other than that, we're doing great with our virtual programming. We have over, I think it's over twenty-two options now that are just ongoing virtual programs, anything from fitness to um, we have new Photoshop classes coming out. It it's really been amazing to see how people have adapted so well to the technology. And it 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 really just says something. I think a lot of people in the very beginning thought seniors don't know how to use technology, but it's been it's really just been incredible to see. We have months um, during this pandemic where we've had six hundred people over the course of a month check into one of our virtual programs um, cumulatively. So it's really been, it's really been something else. It really has. Um, and one last plug, it won't take up too much more time, but we have actually two plugs. Um, our Stand for Seniors program with the Northborough Rotary Club is still going on. If there is any senior in town who owns their own home and has either a financial um hardship, can't afford an ice melt product, or they just cannot physically lift an ice melt product, just call us and one of the Rotary volunteers will deliver a bucket of ice melt right to your doorstep. Put it or put it wherever you need it. And we're also still doing the Book and a Bite program with the library and Wegmans. So if there's anyone out there who is feeling a little bit bored and needs a new activity, a new uh, book to read or an audio book even. Um, if you sign up for this program through us, uh, the library will even help you choose the book that you want and will deliver it right to your doorstep with a snack provided by Wegmans. And that's what we're up to.
That's all.
That's
Uh, once again, thank you so much for all the work that you and the Senior Center staff have been putting in to provide the appropriate outreach, try to uh, provide services to our seniors and uh, uh, kind of keep things going uh, as best as we can through this uh, through this period. So uh, if there are no more other questions, uh, do I have a motion regarding the grant?
Mister Chairman, I move the board vote to accept the building social connections and resiliency in seniors through the expressive arts grant from the Metro West Health Foundation pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three A, and to authorize the town administrator to execute the agreement necessary to expend such funds.
Seconded.
Moved by Julian Hirsch, seconded by Scott Rogers. Uh, if there's no further discussion, this is a roll call vote. Scott Rogers?
Aye.
Julian Hirsch?
Aye.
Leslie Rutan?
Aye.
Tim Kalen?
Aye.
And I, Jason Pro, also vote aye, so it carries unanimously and the grant is accepted. So uh, once again, Liz, thank you so much for all the all the work and we look forward to seeing the uh, the benefits of this new program. So
Thank you very much.
Okay. Good night. And now well past the hour of eight fifteen, never mind seven fifteen. And we have John Codere, Town Administrator, and Scott Sharpinter, D P W Director for an update regarding traffic concerns in the vicinity of Bartlett Street. Uh, John, would you care to lead it off?
Sure. Thank you, Mister Chairman. Uh, before I I I jump into this, I I just want to make one comment. If you remember when uh, COVID started, uh, there was a lot of speculation uh, about uh, what we were doing or not doing for seniors or for businesses. And a lot of that speculation was online and it was by folks who really didn't know. Um, as we've made progress through all this, you know, we can tell you with facts um, that the seniors are being well taken care of. There aren't a lot of unmet needs. There are some folks in uh, at risk. They're on our radar and we're working with them. Um, but again, it's based on actual work that's being done by people like Liz, as is done in all of our departments. And so sometimes just the the speculation and uh, some of the stuff that you see in here online or on social media are are folks just doing that, speculating without actual information and knowledge. And it just goes to show, um, we have, that's one of the reasons why we have people like Liz come in and talk to you about these things. You hear really what's happening. You also hear the fact that on multiple rounds of calling every senior in town, we have not identified, you know, law uh, significant needs. Um, it's just, it just goes to show that uh, the actual work that's being done and the actual outreach is different than maybe necessarily what you're seeing or hearing on social media. So again, if people have actual questions or know of somebody who has a need, contact the Health Department, contact the Senior Center Director. We have the capacity to help folks and to connect them with services if they actually need them. So I just think that's important because one of the things that we've been fighting as we kind of go through this is is perception and uh, and that gets guided by oftentimes a limited number of people who yell the loudest about a perceived issue or problem. And it's not necessarily reality. And that was not the case, or rather, that was the exact case with the the seniors in our programs and and the needs uh, ultimately that we we met. But uh, by the way, uh, Liz is just doing a great job for us. She's excellent uh, excellent hire and uh, and doing really well up at the Senior Center. So in terms of your next item on the agenda, uh, at your meeting on November twenty-third, uh, the D B W Director and uh, and other staff responded to some uh, concerns regarding traffic uh, issues and complaints uh, on Bartlett Street. And so some of those issues were addressed at that meeting. And then there was a commitment made by myself and staff that we would do a more comprehensive, deeper dive as time permitted and get back to the board at this meeting uh, with an update uh, on things that uh, we kind of divided things up into three sections. Uh, things that we've done that have been completed, you know, items that are in progress, and then things that we are working on or considering uh, for the future. And so we've made uh, an incredible amount of progress. I I will just say this, uh, as busy as we've been, I've spent more time on this issue than I have on the budget and probably equal amount of time on COVID. So it is receiving you this board's attention and it's receiving staff's attention. But it is also being done in a priority order with all the other things that we have going uh, ongoing with the town right now, which is significant. Uh, and I know you've seen and received updates about other projects and how everything fits in. Um, but I think you'll be very pleased with the uh, progress that's been made. And uh, we've got some real positive things to report uh, to the board uh, this evening. So uh, through the chair, what I'd like to do is I'd like to turn it over to Scott Sharpinter, the D B W Director, to go through some of the more direct things that his department has been involved in. Uh, uh, that's concluded in the memo that we provided for you in advance of this meeting. And then I will come back and I'm going to talk to you more about some of the bigger policy outreach and some of the connections that we've made with the uh, businesses down on Bartlett Street uh, to ensure that we're going to be able to address the concerns of the residents. So with that, through the chair, I'm going to hand it over to Scott. Um, and then I'll come back at the end. Scott?
Thank you, John. So as John indicated, we've delved deeper into several of the topics that have come up of concern in and around Bartlett Street, primarily geared toward traffic, but there are a couple other topics that that arose. Uh, a few of the items that um, that we've completed recently. One is related to uh, a tractor-trailer pull-off on the side of Bartlett Street. That was a quick and easy remedy. Um, there was a uh, dirt pull-off on the side of Bartlett Street. It's uh, within the public right-of-way. Reports where the tractor-trailers were staying there idling at night. Uh, the Public Work Department mobilized granite blocks to put out as traffic barriers um, so that vehicles can't go off the uh, the shoulder at that location. So we were able to address that concern relatively quickly. There are further considerations to um, uh, address parking on Bartlett Street that I believe will come up later on the agenda this evening. Yes, so that's up for discussion later. Uh, the, was, there was a request for some advanced warning signs for the heavy commercial vehicle exception on Maple Street. One of the concerns that was raised by citizens was trucks may follow uh, their map or their their um, mapping system and end up turning down Ridge, end up at the end of Maple Street and not sure which way to go. Um, in other instances, trucks may turn off of Bartlett Street onto Maple Street and then end up not sure if they can continue down Maple Street. Uh, so the request was made to add some uh, advanced warning signs. We've purchased those signs and installed them. So there's an advanced warning sign uh, at the intersection of Maple and Bartlett, letting truck drivers know that there is a truck exclusion coming. The same sign is uh, located, another one of the same signs is located at uh, Ridge Road and Lyman Street. Uh, again, notifying any vehicles, any trucks that go in that direction that there is a truck exclusion coming. Uh, hopefully that'll help uh, address any any unknown truck drivers in the areas from 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 reaching those roads. Request came through that we voted along to Mass D O T for an advanced warning sign on Route Route twenty Main Street, letting drivers know of the truck exclusion on, on that segment of Maple Street. So there's an advanced warning sign for the truck, the truck exclusion on Short Davis. Uh, that Mass D O T uh, approved for installation. That was installed specifically because of the right left-hand turning lane. There's a dedicated left-hand turning lane on Route twenty Southwest cutoff going eastbound at Davis. Now, left turn, learning lane, we wanted to capture the the large trucks, commercial trucks, before they got into the lane. So they didn't pose a safety hazard. Uh, Mass D O T installed that. We use that uh, mechanism, photograph and um, sigh sign to formally request a Mass D O T permit to install a similar sign in advance of Maple Street. The uh, the permit was was issued on December eighth. The signs have been ordered, or the sign has been ordered and when uh, weather permits, uh, we will be out there to install that sign uh, between likely between Brigham and Maple. There are a few items that are in process that came up previously that we've been uh, we've achieved uh, uh, plateaus on. Uh, one was a a long discussion we had about additional truck exclusions in the Maple Ridge Collins neighborhood. We reached out to C M R P C, Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, who does our traffic counts in town, and requested to get on their early schedule in the spring to uh, obtain traffic counts on the segment of Maple Street that is not currently truck excluded and on Ridge Road, which is currently not a truck exclusion um, in the spring. So they emailed us back a commitment that uh, we are on their schedule for those traffic counts to be collected.
Uh, you want to mention why they can't be done right now?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we don't. They don't, they don't lay out traffic count. Traffic counts are done with those tubes you see driving over. There's two, the two tubes that run across the road. You can't put those out in the winter. Um, snow, salt, plows, they destroy them. So they only do it during non, non-snow removal seasons.
The other point, if I can just chime in, is that uh, it makes no sense to do traffic counts right now before the facilities are open. Uh, because you're not going to capture any, because the the truck traffic is basically the same as it was when the last uh, or the same facilities were open the last time we did the traffic counts. Uh, so you don't want to do them now. You want to do them in the spring after the facilities are open and we can do the actual traffic counts. So those are scheduled and those will take place.
The um, you know, when you got, when you obtain a traffic count, what drives the ability to seek a heavy commercial vehicle exclusion is the percentage of trucks. It's not a percentage of increase. So having a pre and post-analysis for traffic count serves no purpose and no bearing in in the D O T's decision process. It's purely percentage of trucks at the time of the request. So as John said, let's wait till the facilities are up and operational to capture uh, an accurate depiction of what the conditions are. We did have a a a request for some additional pedestrian safety measures to be installed at the crosswalk across Route twenty at Maple Street. We reached out to Mass D O T uh, in writing, not through their permit process, but in writing, asking them for consideration of uh, rectangular rapid flashing beacons to be installed at that crosswalk. These are pedestrian activated lights. You see them in other communities and in downtown areas. We just installed a set on uh, North Gate Road, on on South Street at North Gate Road. We requested D O T for to consider that. Um, they responded to us three or four weeks later, indicating that they did the review in accordance with the uh, Federal Highway Administration's guidelines for unsignalized pedestrian crossings and determined that it doesn't warrant uh, the additional safety measures due to a few factors. Um, average daily trips, our annual average daily trips, A A D T, uh, the speed limit and the number of lanes. So we went back um, and asked that they would reconsider it, considering and 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 take into consideration during that process, some of the um, adjacent amenities that may have not been captured during their first review, such as uh, an elementary school seven hundred fifty feet away. You know, some athletic fields a quarter of a mile away, some restaurants and some 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 commerce on Main Street. So we got a commitment from them that they would reconsider. My expectation is we are not going to hear anything till after the New Year because their um, salutation included happy holidays. But um, our, our, our hope is that they will be uh, open to reconsideration um, for implementation here. So we'll, we'll sit back and wait and hopefully, hopefully we get here from them soon.
And if I can chime in, in the interim, we have reached out to our legislative delegation to let them know that we have made this request to to be looked at and we're asking for their support in reaching out to uh, Mass D O T to encourage them to give this due consideration. So uh, so we're trying to leverage. We talked about Hank was here before. Hank would have been my my first phone call. In fact, uh, it's still my first phone call because he's he's still around um, to try to get that, get that attention. So um, again, this is a state process. It's their road. We need their permission, uh, so, but we are working through our legislative delegation to to encourage a uh, a very fair and thorough review of that.
Another topic that was uh, that came up was Bartlett Street parking, but not just the tractor-trailers. Uh, one, one uh, concern that was raised was, yes, we've blocked off the primary parking spot, but you know, what happens when tractor-trailers find other spots? So I delved into the current regulations for no parking on Bartlett Street. Uh, it's a bit complicated the way it's currently written. It has hours of days that that there's no parking in different directions and seasons when there's no parking due to, it's primarily driven around the high school. During school days, during the school year, this side during these hours, that side during those hours. So in consultation with uh, the town engineer and police chief, the thought and and uh, and recommendation would be to one, simplify this for enforcement and make it easy for the residents to understand the rules and just have no parking on Bartlett Street. Route twenty to the town line. Two reasons beyond um, simplifying of the the regulation, that it's really not appropriate to park on Bartlett Street from the school or hemlock to Route twenty. There is not adequate uh, shoulder width for safe parking there. That makes no sense. When you go past the school and you start to broaden out in width, you're approaching the industrial zone. That's where we don't want tractor-trailers parking. Um, so while it's once, one section we don't want and the other section is not safe too, our recommendation to the board to to make it simple and safe for everyone, preclude, prohibit parking all along Bartlett Street from Route twenty to the town line. That was our, that was our findings and recommendations.
And again, I'm going to chime in here. Uh, we specifically put that vote for you after public comment. Uh, and also for your consideration, you, just so we're clear, uh, that's a town road and it's within your authority to uh, to take a vote to uh, to establish a no parking zone on Bartlett. We don't need to go to the state. We don't need any permission. Uh, so it's up to you if you feel comfortable taking that vote this evening uh, down the line on the agenda. Or if you want, we can send notice out to everybody on Bartlett to let them know that you're contemplating that. You can take it up at your next meeting. But the bottom line is, I think one of the things that we heard um, is uh, again, we don't want to just move the problem around along Bartlett Street. If, and we want to make sure before the other facilities are open on Bartlett Street that uh, we don't have a situation where they're queuing up and parking along along Bartlett. So this step, if the board so chooses, it's within your authority and it's the recommendation of staff. You can eliminate that problem uh, moving forward uh, in perpetuity and give the police department the tools that they need to actually enforce it. So uh, but again, it's your decision. You can make it tonight. You can make it at your next meeting, but it's down under But again, it's your decision. You can make it tonight. You can make it at your next meeting, but it's down under new business uh on your agenda this evening. Back to you, Scott.
Thanks, John. So um another concern that came up from a resident was regarding the. Uh, one of the permitting decisions associated with three thirty, three fifty Bartlett Street. That's the Amazon facility. Uh, the requirement for an ambient sound level study to be performed. So I'll give you a little brief explanation of the ambient sound study. You do a baseline study. Um, before the facility is operational. And then you do an operating study afterwards to determine what if any sound impacts there are from the operations. Now, the sound study is for the facility. It is for typically HVAC equipment on top of the. The building, any machinery that's operating indoors, if it's a manufacturing facility. If there are uh trash compactors outside. Um, that's what it's for. So what is, what is exempt and specifically exempt from the noise study? Are vehicles that are properly licensed uh and registered to operate on public ways. Uh, so this noise study um is complete. It has not been submitted. We, we received. Notification from the developer that the noise study will be submitted before the holidays. They're not near fully operational. So the phase two of the noise study, we don't expect to see for quite some time. Uh, but phase two has been done for a while. Um, I've. On my consulting side have done noise studies in the past with, with subs. You gather the data. It takes month or two to. And now analyze the data, pull together a report and get that baseline set. So I don't know what the dates are on the study. That'll be. That'll be provided when it's submitted, but um it is in the works and we expect to receive it in the coming days. There was a request from a, a citizen to consider the. Heavy commercial vehicle exception on exclusion on, on Lyman Street. Primarily in Westboro. The um, the limits were, were um defined. As Chauncey Road to Talbot. Um, I think that was to try to capture most of Westboro. If a truck exclusion was to be implemented, uh tried to be implemented by Westboro on Lyman Street. My guess is it would be from Route nine to the town line. Um Chauncey. Street and Chauncey Road and Oak Street are not an appropriate alternate route. They're, they're narrow, they're residential, they're winding. That's where the uh, was it the Westboro Tennis Club is down there. It's no place to send tractor trailers, when Route nine is right there. The, the issue comes up when you look at southbound traffic, if you were to put a truck exclusion, you know, at the Westboro Town Line. The alternate route that Westboro would need to submit to the state for consideration for trucks traveling south on Lyman Street. We'd be to turn down Ridge. Go down Maple, not, not a left on Maple, but a right, back on Bartlett and then go right through Bartlett where we don't want it to go. Um, and that would require the town of Northborough's approval. And I don't believe any staff would support that as a viable alternate truck route for. Vehicles that would be going south on Lyman Street. The um. You know, if the, if the truck exclusion was to extend throughout Lyman Street. Then all it would do was force vehicles, more trucks onto Bartlett Street because that would be their alternate route. And again, I don't believe anybody here would. Stick by and stand by and support Bartlett Street being an alternate route for a Westboro truck exclusion.
Yeah, I'm going to just chime in here too. Just uh for folks that don't know, it's important to, to remember that. We have uh McKesson, that's a six hundred thousand square foot facility on Lyman Street. And we also have a FedEx facility on Lyman Street and Nucor uh a manufacturer on Lyman Street. Uh, and there's several others. We also have Eagle Leasing, which is a leasing of uh trailer uh um. Uh, storage units. All these are in this industrial area on Lyman Street. So. All the trucks coming to and from those facilities would need access to those facilities. So.
Yeah, so with that truck exclusion, they would have to go. North on Lyman Street to Bartlett instead of south to get to Route nine. So that the, uh Northborough would not, would not be in a position to support that. So those, those were the initial topics. The, the only one we have left for items in progress, I believe. Is discussions and contact with some of the um operating industrial facilities on Bartlett Street. And I think, John, you wanted to.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm happy to, to chime in here. So we've been, uh, we've been very busy making contact. With all the facilities down on Bartlett Street. Uh, so uh I'll just start with regard to Amazon. We've had extensive conversations already with. Their uh, their corporate uh folks. This is the uh, the individual that is in charge of the uh public um. When I get her title right, uh Public Policy Manager for the Northeast. And then uh the police chief has had uh multiple and extensive uh ongoing discussions with the onsite manager. Uh, of the uh Amazon facilities regarding uh regarding the concerns that have been expressed uh by the residents. Um, we've also reached out. I had a discussion, a very good discussion with. Uh Peter Latta, who is the uh, one of the owners and the chairman and CEO of A Dewey Pile. Uh, we have a long relationship with them. They've been in that location since two thousand and eight. Uh, and also with the onsite uh manager included in your packet. And I'd be happy to make this available to any of the residents who would like this is an excellent letter from uh, from um Mr. Latta. Regarding his commitment to being a good neighbor and, and uh, and what he is doing and willing to do to ensure. That uh they are not uh causing any issues for uh the neighborhood, particularly the end of uh. Of Bartlett Street near Route twenty. Uh, there's also a letter in uh here from Amazon uh discussing uh, uh their commitment. And uh, and there's a communication from me with the onsite manager of the FedEx facility as well. Um, the FedEx facility is interesting. Of all the facilities out there, they don't have a condition in their site plan about a turning restriction. But they without a question immediately uh understood the situation and have made a firm commitment to the town. That uh actually beginning uh today, this morning, having training sessions with all of their staff to make sure that they are following the turning restrictions. So here's the thing, uh at this point, we have a commitment from all of the major facilities down there, including three oh one. Bartlett Street, which is uh, which is comprised of several smaller tenants inside of uh that structure. Every one of them has uh agreed and reaffirmed uh their willingness to uh, to restrict truck traffic going towards. The uh end of Bartlett uh towards Route twenty uh and to direct uh anybody heading to four ninety-five. I two ninety, Mass Pike, Route nine, uh and even Route twenty directing their traffic to go out by Cedar Hill. And Hayes Memorial. Um, so they've agreed uh that, they've agreed also to put up appropriate signage. That uh Scott Sharptier in his office is working on putting up the exact signage that we would like them to do. Uh, it's extensive, uh but they have all committed to putting up the signage, uh paying for the installation. And abiding uh by that uh, by that signage. Um, we've had some other discussions and in particular, the police chief has had some uh more detailed discussions with um Amazon. And there's a little bit of it in the uh communications uh that we shared with you from them. Essentially, they have a GPS app that they are putting in place for their drivers. Uh, beyond the immediate issue of uh providing written instructions and direction. To ensure that their uh drivers are taking the appropriate routes. They're, they're uh are working on a, it's called Geo fencing. Uh, essentially, it's an app that will uh pop up when they leave the facility, tell the driver the direction to go. Also tell the driver the roadways and the routes to avoid. So things like, uh, I know we had a comment about a truck turning around on Stirrup Drive. Um, and just trucks basically uh making their way down to the end of Bartlett and then picking up four ninety-five. You know, going down Route twenty. That is not the most direct route, nor is that the route they want their drivers to be taking. Uh, so they've made a firm commitment that uh they will put signage up at the end of their driveway. Uh, they are all training and giving very clear instruction. And in some cases, uh in particular with uh Amazon. They are moving forward with the technology to, to make it uh easier to communicate in real time. With their drivers to ensure that they're staying off local roads and taking preferred routes uh in accordance with their site plan. Approval. But you'll see in the communications uh that were included in your packet. Um, we, again, we've talked in at the corporate level and we've talked to the local onsite managers. And we have a commitment uh across the board from all of them that uh, that they will in fact. Uh, be installing signage, abiding by those routes. And uh, and they want to work with the town. Uh, again, these are the more efficient routes for their drivers. Uh, uh, they're not interested in causing trouble. In the neighborhoods. And so uh, 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 we have, we will continue to work with them. Uh, you know, as any facility opens. Uh, I remember, I think I told this uh story on your meeting on the twenty-third. Uh, when A Dewey Piled opened, uh, you know, there were trucks going down some of the local roads. I made a phone call to Peter Latta. Uh, the CEO and that ended immediately. Um, keep in mind now, any truck that has a uh, a business delivery. Uh, can take a left and exit that way if they have business on uh, on uh, on that side of. Uh Bartlett Street. However, the majority of them don't and won't. Uh, the other thing to keep in mind, uh, and we talk about the, some of the issues with Lyman Street is, again FedEx. Has a facility on Bartlett and a facility on Lyman, and they are often uh going between those two facilities. So that will need to continue to take place. But they've given us again a firm commitment that from Lyman to Route twenty, unless they are making a local delivery. Uh, they have no intention of having their vehicles and their drivers using that route. So uh, again, in your packet, we have a written confirmation from all of them. Uh, we've established uh, you know, contact. Both at the corporate level and the local level. And I will say without hesitation and without uh qualification. Uh, they're all looking to work with the town uh to do what's best for the neighborhood and to work with us uh moving forward. Now, this isn't a, you know, a, a one and done. Obviously, we need to maintain uh communication. They need to maintain. Reminding drivers uh and new drivers as they come on board with the various uh companies. Uh, the signage, the permanent signage that will be installed at the end of each of the driveways that they've all agreed to do. Uh, will certainly be a permanent uh reminder. A Dewey Pile does have a sign at the end of their driveway. That says uh, you know, no left-hand turn or left-hand turn uh for local deliveries only. Um, they're willing to put larger signs, more explicit signs, you know, with the logo for four ninety-five. And I two ninety and saying, you know, right, right turn uh. Uh, through Cedar Hill. We're also looking at adding some signage at Cedar Hill again. Uh reinforcing that that's the turn that they want to be taking to get on to four ninety-five, I two ninety, Mass Pike, Route nine. Um, so uh, this is a, this is great progress. It's taken a lot of work uh to contact the correct people. Uh, to get the commitments from them in writing and now to uh establish the relationships and move forward, make sure the signage gets installed. And, and then we're going to have to continue to monitor it. And what uh, what they all asked. And you can see in the communications, what they all asked is if you see one of their trucks. In a, on a road that they shouldn't be on, to take a picture of it and get a plate or a marker number. And they will follow up on that. And so uh, so residents see that happening, uh if they let us know. Uh, we can follow up with the appropriate facility owner in contact. Uh, and you saw particularly in the A Dewey Power letter that he said that, that, that absolutely they, there's a commitment that they're not going to be sending trucks down that way. Um, you know, FedEx again, little bit different in that they uh, they don't have a condition in their site plan approval. But uh, but we have secured a commitment from them that they're not interested in uh sending trucks down that way and causing difficulties uh for. The neighborhood. So again, this has been a lot of work, a lot of uh communication. I want to recognize the police chief in particular. On the Amazon project, he has had extensive conversations. Uh, with the folks down there with the onsite manager. I've been dealing more with the corporate. And then together, we're kind of meeting in the middle and getting the commitments from them in writing about what it is that they're going to do. Um, the last thing I want to mention is uh, uh, you know, I mentioned at the beginning, there are three levels, things that we've taken care of, things that are in progress. And things that we're kind of working on. Um, we are still continuing to have a conversation with off-site mitigation, particularly in the area of the high school. Um, one of the things that we're looking at is the uh pedestrian activated flashing crosswalk. At the high school entrance and perhaps uh putting uh as you approach. Uh, from down by the facilities and you're approaching uh Bartlett heading towards Route twenty. Uh, putting up a permanent uh flashing, you know, your speed is, you know, approaching residential neighborhood, slow down. Kind of a sign there to warn people that they're going from this industrial area into uh a residential um section. Uh, so we are having conversations. Uh, I'm not at liberty to really get into. Uh, too much more detail on those other than that we are working with at least one or more of the. Vendors out there at possibly having them uh pay for those improvements. Regardless, these are things that the town is looking at uh out of our budget as well. Um, to look at uh making sure that we're uh. Improving the pedestrian safety, particularly around the area of the high school. So some of this stuff's going to take a little bit more time. Uh, but as you can see from the memo, the items that Scott has covered, things that I just conveyed and what's in the packet. Provided you tonight, we made some uh significant uh progress. And I think probably the most important thing out of everything that I can communicate to you tonight is, you know, enforcement is catching people. You know, signage is, you know, telling people what they should be doing. What we have is uh, most importantly, is a professional. Commitment from these facilities that they want to do the things that we are asking them to do. So we're not fighting with them. We're not saying you need to do this. You can't send trucks down this way. And they're saying, well, you know, we're not sure if we agree with you. Without exception, they were in agreement and they said they're going to do everything in their power to uh, to meet us on that. And to, the last thing they want are residents unhappy or complaining about uh, about their businesses. Uh, so again. Uh, all good information, all good progress. Uh, and it doesn't stop here tonight. We'll continue to have that dialogue. And uh, what we would ask of residents is if you do see uh trucks. Uh, particularly after these programs are implemented, the trainings are in place. Um, if you see trucks on roads that they ought not to be, uh particularly if they're for uh trucks from. These facilities, Amazon trucks, FedEx trucks, A Dewey pile trucks. Um, those are things that you should let the police department know. And then again, the police chief has, you know, direct relationship with uh, with these uh. Onsite managers, as do I, and we'll follow up as, as appropriate. But. Again, there's going to be a little bit of growing pains as they open. Um, but the commitment's there and I think as particularly Amazon, which is, look, let's be honest, A Dewey pile FedEx. You know, um, you know, they've been there. They've been there. They, they do, how's been there since two thousand and eight. Uh, I, I will say, leading up to zero Bartlett being potentially developed. And the heightened interest in the neighborhood uh about truck traffic. Um, we got a few, if any complaints about truck traffic. So. But we do appreciate the fact that the, the neighborhood, the complexity is changing, new development is occurring. And the desire of the residents and the administration to get out ahead of some of these things. So before Amazon is open and we have a bigger issue. That uh, that we're kind of working together and uh with these uh facilities to address things in advance. To sort of uh taper off uh any potential and head off any potential issues before they become uh overly problematic. So that's our update for tonight. Certainly can answer any questions that the, the board may have. But again, you have all of this in your packet. And by the way, if. Uh, any resident wants to see the information that's provided to the board or the board wants to forward it to anybody. That has emailed or contacted you, you should, it's a public document. Please feel free to do so, even the communications from. Uh, Amazon, yeah, A Dewey Pile and the communications with FedEx. Feel free to share those.
Hey, thank you very much, John. Thank you very much, Scott. And thank you very much, Chief Liver for. All the additional time and effort put into this to try to address the concerns of citizens uh. As we were just discussing earlier, under the um. Uh, agenda item regarding COVID nineteen update, it has had. A significant impact on the operations of town staff uh, uh, with all the other work that uh. That we're trying to do, we're trying to keep up with. This has been a very significant issue, continues to be a significant issue. It's not something that can be resolved quickly. Uh, it does take an investment of time. On the part of staff to make these connections, have these discussions and come to these agreements. So. Um, I appreciate the extra effort that's been put in place over these last several weeks to try to make some progress in this regard. Um, any questions from the board? Scott?
Yeah, thank you, Jason. Um, quick follow-up question about noise studies. So if um. They exclude vehicle noise, are there other regulations or conditions that apply to vehicle noise?
I, I'm not familiar with any. Um, I, I, I don't know. I mean, I, I know. I, I'm not familiar with any. Um I I I don't know. I mean, I I know. You know, you can run around with open headers on your nineteen seventy Chevelle because it's too loud. I I don't know about uh large commercial trucks though.
Yeah, I mean, they they'd be following the, you know, the the appropriately licensed and uh and appropriately to be operating on a public way. So I don't know that the police chief has anything to add to that, but but basically, the trucks. Uh that'll be accessing these facilities. Again, uh keeping in mind that, you know, these facilities are in an industrial area. And were permitted and approved by the planning board and allowed as of right. Um so the truck traffic, uh the trucks that will be accessing them is, as long as they are road legal and operating within the. When the guidelines and they would, you know, they they would be free to to operate, just like you would be free to operate your. You know, your own personal vehicle. You have to have a muffler on it and you know, things of that nature, but. But as long as you are uh, you know, passing inspection, then you're, then you're uh, you're covered.
Alright, thanks.
Other questions? Tim?
Hi, um I just wanna thank John, Scott, Chief Liver and everybody else involved for for putting all the. The time and effort into to getting this um, a lot of these um. The 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 complaints um coming up with solutions for all all the different um. Problems that people are having. I know the the amount of time and effort must have have been. Um tough, especially with everything else going on in in town. Um I just wanted to mention um. Just one thing from the the crosswalk improvements at Maple Street and Route twenty. Um in the the document, Scott, it says that uh. Mass DOT did approve some modifications to this intersection, including repainting and other minor improvements. So I just wanted to point that out that um while we are waiting to hear back. Uh in regards to the RFPs, uh FBs. That that some minor improvements will be be made to that that crosswalk. So so people. Um see some improvement there. Um and and just in in regards. I know this, everything that's been going on on Bartlett Street has been very frustrating um for a lot of the residents that have been impacted. By it. Um and they they have certainly voiced their frustrations and I I understand and appreciate their frustrations. Um but like it, like John has said and Jason has said, these these things just take time. And it's, it's very difficult for us to give daily or weekly updates on where things are. Uh because quite frankly, the, we don't know where things are because we're in discussions with people. Um so generally, the 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 way this process works is is we hear complaints, we work on them and then during these meetings, we. We give updates on on where things are because. We share information when we have concrete information to share. It's, nobody's trying to hide anything or or keep anything from the residents. We're just, we just wanna share. Good, solid, correct information with people when we have it. Um so I just, I just wanted to share that. And again, thanks everybody for for the work that went in uh went into to this problem. Thank you.
And i- if I can, if if I may, Mr. Chairman, just add, look, a- and we get that. Uh uh you know, with the exception of Amazon being uh the the Amazon facility going through the tenant fit out, they're they're not operational. So there are some some vehicles through there and I think people are highly sensitive to that. You know, I I think what we got, there was a sense from the residents in the neighborhood about. Concern about what might be, not necessarily what's happening out there. I mean, clearly, there's a truck, an occasional truck here or there. Um but uh it's really more a concern about what it could be. And so um you know, so sometimes in these instances, there isn't something for us to, you know, there's not an existing problem. Per se, but there is uh the potential for one. And and we get that sensitivity. And I think that. All the work that's been done is to make sure that the concerns about trucks parking along, you know, right right now, uh the fire, the police chief is watching this. It's not a major issue from park, trucks parking along there. We dealt with the area where they were parking, but could it be in the future? Yeah, it 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 could be. And so I think it behooves us to be proactive on that, and that's why we're bringing forward the the parking ban for the board. But. But again, a lot of the issues, I think, and the the concern that I sense coming from uh from the neighborhood is. About what might happen or what could be as the facilities open. Um so uh so again, the steps that we've taken hopefully will alleviate some of those concerns.
Thank you, John. Uh Leslie?
Yeah, uh thank you all very much for your work on this and Scott and John really for very methodically going through all the. The uh concerns that people have voiced that I've seen. Um there may be some others, I'm not sure, but this seemed to cover everything that that I have seen. And I really appreciate all the research that has to go into a lot of these things. You can't give a quick answer to all these things. It requires research and knowing what the regulations are, dealing with the DOT and the state and so forth and so on. So I I really appreciate it. And I understand, you know, the neighbor's concerns and, you know, Bartlett is definitely up. You know, just generally picking up. It's industrial zone and I think, you know, years ago, no one really foresaw. Maybe some of these things happening, but the reality is that there are definitely more trucks and I I can understand the concern. So. I do really appreciate all this work. Um to clarify, if a resident does see a truck where it shouldn't be, John, you had mentioned that they could take a picture and send it. Would they email the picture to who in particular?
Uh well, it so so you, again, keep in mind now, there there are still trucks and they still have a right to be on. The road uh where there isn't a truck exclusion. You see a truck on a road with a truck exclusion. Please get us a plate number and the police will follow up on that. Uh but if you see, if you're concerned, if there's Amazon trucks. After we kinda working through this with the onsite manager and the corporate and all the steps they put in, if you see. You know, a truck going out Bartlett. And uh again, we're not gonna, you're not gonna know any more than I would uh if if it's making a local delivery. If it is, look, you know, look, eighteen-wheelers come to my house to deliver mattresses. I live on Ridge Road, right? So if a truck has business uh making a delivery on a road, um then they they have. Uh even on a truck-excluded road, they have a right to be there. What we're asking is just if you're seeing trucks. Uh for instance, somebody had a picture of a truck of Am- an Amazon truck that. Uh I've turned around or stopped on Stirrup Brook. Um but it's like a picture of the truck that, we're looking for markers and license plates. Then we can follow up on on that if you can. You can't always get it, but if you can. Um but if you send that uh to, uh if they're on a truck exclusion, you should let the police know. Um or you can let my uh my office know uh through the website. And we will follow up with the owners of the facilities and they'll be able to tell. Like uh you saw in the letter from Peter Latta from A Dewey Pile. He said, look, if they have a delivery down there, it's legitimate. But he he said, if you give me a picture or a a plate and a marker. I'll make sure that they had a local delivery and if they don't, they're our employee. We will take it up with them as a disciplinary issue. Um so again, uh you need the markers and a a plate is the best for us. If you can get a picture of it, uh then we can follow up.
Okay, so my question though is, is it best to send a picture to you, to police chief, to what's about, through the website?
Uh he's raising his hand, so that's gonna, you can send it to the police chief then. Since all I'm gonna do with it is send it to the police chief. If it's like, if it's on a truck-excluded road, it's gonna go to the police chief. If it's just on a road. That trucks, you know, they're not excluded from, but it might not be an appropriate road for them to be on, like say Ridge Road. Then I would send it, we would send it to the facility, but you can send them to the police chief and then we'll, I'll work with him uh and the managers.
Okay, so a picture to your your town email address then?
Yes.
Okay, just wanna clarify that. Um but I I'm also very appreciative of the businesses who are very community-minded, obviously. Don't want to be disliked here. They're important to our community as well. Um and you know, all those businesses and their trucks do provide a service that I think all of us have enjoyed during this pandemic and during the holidays. So, you know, we can't live without trucks, you know, so I I am sensitive to that as well, but I I think it's great to. Um make a strong action toward them knowing exactly where they should be driving. It doesn't hurt, it shouldn't hurt them. I'm sure they'll appreciate the clarification. I think the signage is. Is fantastic and again, getting you know, putting four ninety-five or two ninety on and further clarification down towards Cedar Hill, I think is great. So, thank you very much for addressing all these issues.
Thank you, Lisa. Uh Julian?
Well, um I I echo the um appreciation by all three of our. Department heads for for doing all of this work and outreach. Um. But I I think that, you know, we've all received a lot of questions and comments from the Bartlett Street residents and I think that there are a lot of. Questions that deserve answers that haven't been addressed here tonight. And I'm wondering if we could set up. Um kind of a a presentation by the uh the title of the person is the community. Poli- policy representative for Amazon to come and talk to us about what exactly this facility is. How, you know, how is the workday organized? Is it, you know, we we saw the the um. The article that said it's, there will be sixteen hundred jobs. How many people a day does that mean coming into town? Are the vehicles electric vehicles? And you know, I don't, there's, Amazon is a very complex business from what I understand. There's warehouses and distribution centers and last mile centers. And I I personally would love to hear a lot more about it and um. I'd like to hear from 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 the community representative if that's a possibility of coming and kind of giving us a. You know, a kind of an overview of what to expect.
Uh just one comment uh through the chair, just it's it, we know what the facility is. It's a, it's a warehousing facility. This isn't a last mile. These aren't the trucks, they're not electric. It's a tractor-trailer trucks making deliveries in there. That's what the, that's all the facility is. It's not a breakdown in distribution facility like you're seeing. Uh discussions about in uh say Worcester. Um so that's not what it is.
So there there are still, you know, other questions in my mind. How how is the workday organized? Is it twenty-four seven? Is it three hundred people coming in at eight o'clock in the morning, in each in their own car? That there's, for me, there's still some issues to address. And as you, as you pointed out, John, you know, this is an ongoing thing and I I think it would be. Beneficial to have somebody from Amazon if the person is willing to come in and kind of give us a um, you know, an Amazon one oh one.
Is it um, was a first step? We're in contact with uh the site manager for the Amazon facility here. Uh is it possible to just get, at at least as a first step, uh. Uh an informational outline about the operations as they're conducted?
Uh I mean, yeah, we can request uh, we can request any information of of them that we, they would like. I mean, it's just, it's important to. Recognize that they're, you know, they're already, they're they're permitted, they're in place. Uh I know the question came up, uh was an email like uh kind of comparing it to. Uh some process that's occurring in Worcester. Well, in Worcester, they're before the planning board getting their approval. Here, it's already approved and and they're in, but we can, we can make any request of them they like, uh that that we'd like. And if they would like to come in and have a further dialogue. Um you know, we can do that, uh if they're willing to, but there's nothing that compels them uh to to do that. Um I know there were a lot of questions, you know, some. Well, I'll leave it to Amazon to speak for themselves, uh but we can make the, we can make the request.
That'd be great. And I I I have um one more question also. So. Uh I don't think they were isolated cases, like just one or two, but there were, there have been instances of trucks. Kind of parking and resting on Stirrup, Stirrup?
There was, nah, there was one incident that I'm aware of that I received and this is uh uh with a Amazon truck. And then there was a report of a UPS truck, but we don't even have a UPS facility in town. So I don't know. If they're, what they were doing, if they're making a delivery there or not. It's important for folks to remember though, like a truck is allowed on a on a street. Uh and and there's nothing we can, from from a truck uh access and driving on a roadway, they're allowed to do that. But if it's a uh if it's uh an Amazon truck or an A Dewey Pile truck or a FedEx truck. Uh and it's on a street or sitting on a roadway locally, those are the types of things that were, that we've spoken. And we spoke with all the facilities specifically about Stirrup Brook. Um that those are things that they're committed to to making sure aren't happening. But again, ju- if a truck is delivering a mattress. On any road or uh or delivering something, they're allowed, they're allowed there. Um so. That those are the instances where if people take a picture of it and get a plate and a number, we'll follow up and we can determine what they were doing on there and. And uh and they shouldn't be, you know, they should, when I say they shouldn't be, there's no legal restriction for this. But they shouldn't be by the commitment that we have from these facilities that they, they wanna be good neighbors and they don't want their trucks. On local roads or causing an issue for the neighborhoods. So they've committed to to uh making sure that. Uh that they will follow up on that. So if residents see something like that, they let us know, we'll follow up and that's how it will get resolved. Okay, just again, just keep in mind, if a truck has a a delivery on any road in town, even a a a a truck-excluded road. They have a legal right to to be there to make the deliveries and to do their business.
Okay, and I have one more question about Maple Street and the um the truck restriction. So Scott, did you say that there's gonna be an advanced warning on? On Route twenty going east, right, for advanced warning? But but could you just explain to me why there? Uh what, is there gonna be one going west or why there wouldn't be if there's not?
Um Ma- Maple Street is is used as a as a cut-through from. Um Route twenty Main Street to Bartlett Street. So any large commercial vehicle coming westbound. Would just turn down Bartlett Street.
Oh, I see. Okay, alright, okay. Makes sense. Thank you.
Uh thank you, Julian. Uh Leslie? Uh you're muted, Leslie.
Sorry. Uh one thing I meant to mention earlier was the uh the Maple and and Route twenty situation. I've been mentioning this for years, quite frankly. This has been a concern of mine, this crosswalk is is. Very dangerous and and cars trying to stop and someone going around them and there's a lot, there are a lot of runners and walkers and bikes and so forth. Um Scott, they're obviously, the state is including in their research into this, the fact that it's a. Interesting convergence of Maple and Brigham. Uh it's not just a T-intersection, it's a. It's a really bad intersection, it's terrible, and the sightlines are horrible. Um have they discussed the sightlines as, you know, especially looking at traffic coming east? On Route twenty toward Maple? And then you're kind of like trying to get out of there, you're, you know, trying to with your life half the time. So do you, are you convinced that the state? Does see and realize all the circumstances of that intersection?
I wasn't convinced. Uh their response outlined criterion in the uh. Federal Highway Administration's Guidelines for Unsignalized Crosswalks. And they mentioned the um ADT, the Annual Average Daily uh Trips, the number of lanes and the speed limit. Uh as generally not warranting a um rectangular rapid flashing pedestrian-activated beacon. So when we got back to them, um we asked for reconsideration and outlined a few of these surrounding amenities. Um and deficiencies, including the proximity of Maple Street and Brigham Street. Kind of making it one big s- sloppy, for lack of better terms, intersection. Um in conjunction with the proximity of a elementary school, very popular restaurant. And athletic fields, all needing to utilize that crosswalk. Um I I, they they typically would look at uh geometric. Sightline restrictions and not necessarily solar. Um and at thirty-five miles an hour, the horizontal, the the um stopping sight distance. On Route the uh twenty in both directions is adequate, albeit most people are doing forty-eight. Um and not paying attention, but when you're doing the speed limit, that's how you do the analysis, the speed limit says that it has adequate. Sight distance. So we, we reached back to them strongly and my expectation is that they're gonna take our request. Um to heart.
Okay, I appreciate that. Also, one other question about that, w- w- when you say number of lanes, are they saying that we? Can't justify, you know, extra signaling or anything like that because there aren't. Enough lanes to make it a wide enough road and a long enough crosswalk? I mean, I look at the situation and say, wow, it's one lane each direction. Which makes it particularly dangerous when you're stopping and someone's going around you on the shoulder. Um the whole thing is bad. What does that mean when you mention lanes?
I did not evaluate the Federal Highway Administration's, to 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 to, where is it? Uh Field Guide for Selecting Countermeasures, I Don't Control Pedestrian Crossing Locations. I did not review that document. Um. I do know that time. I do know that time timing is is one consideration. The the fact that they pretty much have passing lanes that are marked with solid white edge lines there. Um probably is not considered in the uh federal documentation and that's something the Mass DOT would look into. The the FHWA is a guideline, it's not a regulation.
Okay.
Um so there is a lot of room for for interpretation, which I'm hoping Mass DOT understands.
And and again, we're hoping that by, we're, as I said, we're working through our legislative delegation to get a little nudge from that that backside, so. We're hoping that'll get some attention.
Okay, and I thank you. And I have one more question about the uh Bartlett uh. The signage is going to go in at the end of the driveways that will make it clear that, you know, four ninety-five is ideally this way. Actually, more than ideally, it is. Um when do you envision some concrete? Um numbers as far as really being able to tell if that's had an impact?
Well, I I don't, we're not um, we're not counting, but I guess it would be the 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 truck traffic on the other end of Bartlett would dissipate. You know, you wouldn't, you just wouldn't be seeing the trucks.
But are we anticipating hopefully being able to see some progress within? What?
Well, in the in the case of uh, again, I don't want to speak for Amazon, but you know, just in some of the conversations informally we've had. They 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 would anticipate a reduction of sixty or seventy percent in in trucks going. Where they shouldn't be going, a reduction of that, getting everything moving in the direction they ought to be. So.
Okay, well, I really appreciate all the work on this.
Yeah, and 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 again, but as I said before, you know, signs don't get the job done. It's the commitment of the facility owners. To training their staff and enforcing their their own policies and regulations that's gonna make the difference. And as of right now, you've seen the letters that we've shared with you. It's in no uncertain terms. Um you know, they're they they want to be good neighbors and they want to do that for us, so.
Yes, right, exactly.
So until they prove otherwise, you know, we'll want to work with them.
That's wonderful. Thank you. Thanks, Scott.
Thank you, Leslie. Uh any other questions by members? I have one question and that is uh. Based on these discussions we've just had. And as as we've observed, the Amazon facility isn't even running yet, it's just being fitted out. Uh is there uh a timeframe here uh? That we should give as a public expectation of improvement, say. Over the next month, over the next two months, uh what's what's a? A timeframe that we would expect uh some of these measures to take effect and. Perhaps have a, you know, observable improvement for the benefit of the residents.
Sure, the training and the direction of their staff, uh the commitment to for them to communicate with their uh employees should be immediate. This week. Uh signage, uh one of the things that we're trying to again get. Uh because we want to tell them the exact signage that we want up there and we'd like to have consistency of the signage between the facilities and not have everybody kind of put up. Different so different uh uh communications. So uh that will take, you know, a few weeks uh to. To order the signs. Again, it takes a little bit of time and then get them installed. So that's something that will take, you know, a a a month or so. Amazon indicated three weeks, but again, we need to tell them uh what we actually, uh we need to get clarity on exactly the wording of the signs and. Uh we want more, we want, and Scott and I were talking this morning for the what you have about the ninth or tenth mockup that you've done. Uh because I keep saying I want more information, I want bigger signs. Um uh because I want the residents to see it and I want the drivers to see it and I want it to be consistent uh down through there. But as far as the changes, uh those should be taking a play, like they're literally meeting this week with their uh employees and communicating that. That's more important. The sign, the signs are a reminder. Um but as far as, you know, them, uh I think Amazon is giving printed instructions to every driver exiting the place. Uh how to get to where where they shouldn't be going. And again, they're committed to a little bit longer term. You know, there's that, then there's the signs that will go up, and then there's the technology that they're going to be implementing, the geo fencing uh program that they're. Putting in uh. In fact, the police chief and I have a meeting scheduled tomorrow afternoon with Amazon. To go over the geo fencing product, how it works, uh when they think they're gonna roll it out, they're gonna, they're gonna do a little uh a demo for us. Uh so we have a better sense of where it is that they would like to go to make to to solve the problem long term.
Very good. Thank you, John. Uh Leslie?
Okay, sorry, just one last comment. That's kind of what I was getting at. I think that what you're saying, really, there is a sense of urgency in a part of these businesses to. To rectify this. This is not something that, you know, they'll have a chat with some of their employees in the next couple of months. I mean, this is something that's gonna happen now. So and I think I want to make sure the residents are aware of that, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Hearing none. I think we are concluded with this item. Once again, John, Scott, Chief Lieber. Uh thank you all for the work and time you've put into this to uh to try to. Make some progress on these concerns. Next item brings us to reports. Scott Rogers.
Yeah, thanks. And you know, this normally the time that, you know, thanking the chiefs for reports, uh. Maybe some of the DPW for the work they've done. Um I find myself in tonight's meeting a little more sobering mood. Uh or somber mood, having uh read latest uh uh events uh that our fire department has had to deal with. Events um actually very, very serious that the police department has had had to deal with. And of course, we had a pretty severe storm that uh DPW did a wonderful job keeping the the streets safe. Um so uh. In addition to the normal thank you for the work that's done, uh just. Um heartfelt appreciation to um our public safety and public works departments. Uh for for what they are doing uh in the. In addition to everything else that they have to deal with. Uh simply amazing. Uh we really appreciate all the work that. You know, direct staff and and extended network of resources um that that contribute. It's just. Uh I I can't say anymore than that, so thank you. Thank you to all of them. Um for a little bit of fun, though, uh uh Community Affairs Committee, uh the Light of Town, uh that was fun. I was on the road. Uh four different nights because I had to uh um. Vote on the uh the ones that made it to the final round in the Rogers family. So uh thanks to all the residents that decorated their homes and made it fun to drive around town and uh. Uh with a big checklist of nearly ninety uh residents to uh visit and evaluate. So congratulations to the winners. But thank you to everybody that that registered and and put themselves out there to decorate their house. It was a lot of fun. Uh that ends my report.
Thank you, Scott. Uh Julian. Uh you're muted, Julian.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um okay, so well, first report on the cultural council, the Northborough Cultural Council. This committee continues to support the arts community despite all of the roadblocks of this year. To that end, they're now reviewing the grant applications, which is really an enormous amount of work. They're always brainstorming new and creative ideas to reach out to the town and advance the arts. Uh secondly, I attended the Historic District Commission meeting, or I watched it on YouTube actually, and um they are continuing to work. Work with writing an historic preservation plan. This will be, they will contribute this to the master plan. Um and they're also perfecting a new sign for the Brigham Street Old Burial Ground. And on the topic of history, I'd like to also mention that the Historical Society is continuing to collect stories. That anyone might like to share about living through this pandemic. It'll be interesting and perhaps helpful. In years from now for people to understand our experiences during this unusual time. And then Community Preservation Committee met and they will hold a public hearing on January seventh to review the projects that they. Will um possibly fund. Uh those projects are from the Northborough Affordable Housing Corporation. A request for pickleball courts, the bond for White Cliffs and. Um a request from Open Space Committee for a contribution to the Conservation Fund. And oh, one more, Historical Society for some much needed repairs and restoration. So again, the uh the public hearing is January seventh, if anyone has comments um or questions. And we met with White Cliffs uh just the other day to get a final report from the architect. Um and they presented us with estimates on work that would be minimal. But necessary to preserve the building while we continue to discuss reuse. That estimate is coming in at about six million dollars, so the committee agreed to write a request for pro- proposal. To investigate possibly partnering with someone who might be interested and thereby we might be able to get some help. Um and I just want to remind folks that all of these committee meetings are on on YouTube. And uh you know, if you have any questions, you can also email me too. Um I I would additionally like to thank the committees and groups that are keeping up the holiday spirit in town in this most unusual time. The town common looks beautiful with the wreaths in Garland and the Community Affairs Committee helped keep the tree lighting tr- tradition alive this year. And one group that rarely gets mentioned, but many people probably enjoy their work is the Northborough Garden Club. They do the garden in front of the Old Town Hall and Summit, Ellsworth McAfee. They did beautiful winter arrangements this year as they always do. And I just wanted to mention them also. And finally, I'd like to wish everyone peaceful, happy and safe holidays and most of all, a new year that's filled with good news. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Julian. Uh Leslie?
Okay, um as per usual, I want to thank both police and fire chief for their reports. Uh the data is wonderful and some some of it ends up on uh social media. And I think it's great. The more residents can see, the better. As far as statistics in town, I think it's wonderful to see that. Um the uh the fire department doing the drive around town with Santa was a huge success. People were very excited about that, very, very happy. You know, I at first. Have for kind of kind of forgotten about it and then I heard the truck come down the street and I saw neighbors come out and stop and wave and take some pictures and. I think it was, it made a huge impression and Chief Parenti, I want to thank you and your department for organizing that. I think that was a wonderful thing to do. I don't know how many hours ultimately it took for the truck to drive around with Santa, but. Two?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, and all the credit goes to Ally. Uh Ally Laney did uh most of the coordination on that, so I really appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah, she did a terrific job on that, notifying everybody too. I saw her after a lot as far as notifying residents about that, so that was terrific. And also, uh uh Chief Parenti, there was a nice, um I haven't had a chance to read the police department report yet in in full. But I did want to mention the fire department uh report um. That it was nice to see someone made a donation in memory of a family member. And their comment was, we appreciate the job you all do to keep us safe. And I thought that was a nice sentiment and it's nice that they thought of you in that way. I thought that was really very nice to see and. The other thing I thought was great was a um emergency medical service survey, post-service survey, it looks like. And you ask a bunch of questions on the survey and the person gave you all five. And said Northborough has one of the finest services that one can wish for. So whoever received that service obviously was very, very happy. And sometimes unfortunately, it does take having a need arise before you realize what our departments do. And um so I want to thank you very much for that and also the police chief for everything. It's just a lot of it is uh. Unseen for the most part, but you all keep us safe and I appreciate that very much. I also wanted to mention the tree lighting um and thank the DPW for managing to get all the lights on those trees. Look beautiful. A really fine job, very, very nice. Um so I want to thank you and I want to thank the Elgonquin uh acapella singers. I have a couple singers in my family who did that years ago and uh it's always very nice to see those kids want to perform like that. And it was, I think, pretty cold out too, so um they did a great job. Um I also want to thank Tim Kalen. For a nice speech uh during that. Um with, I thought you made some really nice comments and you're, I loved your sentiments that you expressed during that. So I want to thank you very much for that. Very nice job. And this is available on YouTube. Um it comes up under the YouTube uh. Uh list of all sorts of things you can see, meetings and events and so forth, so. I just wanted to mention that as well. You can see it now, just because you didn't see it live, you can see it later. And um this usual street and sidewalk plowing, I'm always impressed by that. I don't know how you get it done. Is it eighty? What, eighty-four or ninety-three miles of roadway in town for one thing?
Eighty miles of road, when they're all cleared, it takes twenty-two hours to do the sidewalks.
Unbelievable. Well, I hope residents appreciate that, but things get done very, very quickly and uh.
He then rode around in a fire truck.
But it worked out really well. Thank you very much. That was a, that was a biggie. Um and that's, that's it. I just want to wish everyone a happy holiday and please stay safe and stay happy. So that is my report.
Thank you, Leslie. Uh Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh I just wanted to uh send order, thank you to the the Northborough Community Affairs Committee. Uh for the tree lighting event. Um thank you for having me uh say a couple of things, you know, as I said in my remarks, it's. It doesn't seem like the holiday season in i- i- until that tree is lit, so it was great that they put in all their efforts this year to get the uh. Get that event held and and Scott and the DPW for getting the the lights up, so it it does certainly makes downtown uh. Uh put us in the holiday spirit, so so thank you for that. And Scott, I just want to uh put a a seed in your head for next year, uh more lights. We need some more lights. I held office hours uh each of the last three Mondays and had some very productive uh conversations with residents. Um just as a reminder, I hold weekly office hours on Mondays from eleven to one. Uh you can call in. The best number to reach me is five zero eight. Seven zero nine five 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 six. Again, it's Mondays from eleven to one. Um feel free to call. Uh I just want to say thank you to Chief Lieber for the the monthly update. Um I just want to note, I appreciate. Um that you have made diversity an important part of the process for fulfilling the positions at the at the department. Um. You know, um. It's nice to see that that the the town and the departments are making that a priority. Um and it was great to see that that you were getting input too, so. Um really, thank you a lot for that. That that means a lot. Thank you. Um we had our first um DNI community committee meeting. Um it was great. I'm really looking forward to working with the residents and the and the people from the other boards on that. Um I think we're gonna, we're gonna uh be able to 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 come up with a a very nice uh presentation for the board selection in twelve months. We have a lot of ground to cover, but um uh I think we have a really um great group of people. And I'm I'm really excited to be working with those people. Um. And lastly, I I wanted to thank um all the various departments in town, uh Town Hall, DPW. Um in particular for their efforts. Um you know, over the courses, meeting and and discussion Bartlett and a number of other things. You know, we we mentioned that the town has all these various. Projects going on and time commitments and in the the workload and. I just want to add some color to that. I think it's important for. For residents to hear some of the things that are going on in the town so they can understand um the magnitude of of the work that's going on. Um you know, obviously COVID nineteen, um as you heard from from Christian Black, our our health agent. Um there's just a tremendous amount of effort going in to making sure um that we stay healthy. Um that the vaccine, when we get it, is distributed properly, to make sure that information gets out to people. It is just a tremendous um time commitment on the. Uh part of almost every aspect of town to make sure that that uh situation is is properly addressed. Um dealing with the state mandate business rollbacks and and regular communications to businesses and residents regarding rollbacks and restrictions. Again, it's just, it's a, it's a townwide effort um by everybody involved. Um ongoing negotiations of the Marlboro Sewer Intermunicipal Agreement. Um that is just a huge issue that I don't think a lot of people in town realize is going on. That has a major impact on. So many different aspects of life um in in the future of the town and it that's, you know. In my opinion, that should be one of the top priorities of the community at this point. Um financial budget, budgetary strategies for the upcoming fiscal year. We're looking at a a financial crunch coming up because of the of of the virus. What are we gonna do for federally? What are we getting for state aid? All these things need to be managed. Um so that we have a budget and the town has the 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 finances to opt to to offer the services that that. So that we have a budget and the town has the, the, the finances to opt, to, to offer the services that, that people need and want. The finance department is currently preparing for a 2020 audit. Uh, I've been through audits. Audits are no fun. They take a lot of time. So that is in itself is a major project. There are various major IT upgrades going on in the town at all the permitting departments, the fire department and the municipal phone system is being upgraded. Those themselves are enormous projects. I know IT projects, um, have a tendency to not go as smooth as, as expected and, and you see things get, get, um, off the rails pretty quick. So again, those projects in themselves are, are enormous issues. The library director is working with DPW to address, address roof and chimney repairs. Again, it's, it's, everybody loves the library. Who doesn't, you know, we, we've, we've got to make sure that those, that that building, um, is well maintained. The Forbes Road Sewer Pump Station, Western, Western Terrence Sewer Pump Station, Town Hall Sewer Pump Station, mechanical upgrades and generator installations. I know nothing about that. I have no idea what goes into it. It sounds like a lot. It sounds like those, like those are big projects. I have a sump pump in my basement. It drives me crazy. So I can only imagine what a sewer pump station mechanical upgrade entails. All the pavement management for 2021, uh, townwide pavement and sidewalk assessments. How, how are roads being maintained? How are our sidewalks being maintained? Sanitary sewer inflow infiltration investigation. I know I want that working right. I know I want water coming in and the other stuff going out. I want that working right. It's important that that is addressed. And again, this is just a small sample of the projects that the town has on its plate right now. So, you know, I just, I think it's important, um, I know the meeting's running long, but I think, I think it's important for, for the, the town and residents to realize, when we say that things are busy, um, it's not an exaggeration. Things, the, 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 the town is very, um, busy with very important things right now. In closing, um, just want to say happy holidays. Um, hope everybody has a safe and healthy holiday season and a happy new year. That ends my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Uh, for my report, I will add my thanks to, uh, DPW, uh, Community Affairs Committee, uh, and other groups who've worked, uh, hard to try to make this holiday season as bright and festive as it can be under the circumstances. Uh, and I appreciate all the creativity to adapt and to try to provide, uh, some, uh, some of the same kinds of things we celebrate each year, uh, perhaps in a slightly different format, uh, but, uh, still maintain that continuity, uh, through the season. Uh, Tim, thank you very much for speaking on behalf of the board at the tree lighting. Appreciate it and excellent job. Uh, just very well spoken. So. I wanted to, uh, just thank town staff once again, uh, as has been done. Um, it has been an enormous demand. Um, and as John observed earlier, a lot of times we have an emergency that it's a weekend or a week or a couple of weeks, uh, to, to address it and dispose of it. Uh, this circumstance with COVID nineteen is an ongoing thing, uh, and, and affects the work effort of town staff each and every day. Uh, so I hope, uh, people can appreciate, uh, the extra demands being placed on them, uh, the more difficult circumstances they're trying to accomplish this work. Uh, Jason Little, our finance director is here. Uh, I know he's been a little busy trying to, uh, uh, help to uh, cobble together some information that puts us on a path to getting our budget done uh, for the next fiscal year. Um, at this point, if I'm not mistaken, we're probably a month behind where we typically are, uh, something on that order. So, uh, I mean, that's, that's a big gap and, uh, uh, I have all the confidence in the world that, uh, that the, uh, the team we have in place here is, is, is the team we need and, and capable of, uh, of doing what's necessary to, to get us over that. So really appreciate the extra hours. I know it goes unnoticed, uh, and unacknowledged sometimes. Uh, um, just want to say thank you to all of you. It's been a very long year and, uh, certainly you've all, uh, stepped up and, and done what's necessary to, to keep us, uh, to keep us on track. In, in regard to the, uh, some of the communications we've received from residents, uh, uh, I just want to point out, and I know it's been frustrating in some circumstances to submit emails or submit questions and not feel like you're getting a response quickly enough where the specific questions you're asking have not been uh, addressed. Uh, there's a couple of points I guess I want to make here. One is that, uh, we do have the emails set up for the selectmen. You can reach any one of us individually. You can also reach all of us as a group. The unfortunate part is that we're operating under open meeting law restrictions. And if I could just quote a brief passage here, uh, in regarding deliberation among board members. The open meeting law defines deliberation as an oral or written communication through any medium, including electronic mail, between or among a quorum of a public body on any public business within its jurisdiction. The significance of that is that, uh, very typically in a, in an email, uh, conversation that has at least a quorum of the selectmen involved, or similarly in any social media, uh, venue, uh, where a quorum of, of selectmen might be present, uh, we have to take care not to be making comments that would be construed as deliberation and consequently a violation of open meeting law. If there are matters that, uh, are before our board or reasonably we can anticipate will be for, will be before our board for some kind of decision-making process and some kind of deliberative discussion, those discussions have to take place in the meeting. They can't be taking place outside of a meeting through email or through social media, uh, or venues like that. So, we do operate under some restrictions like that. Uh, I can only speak for myself. Um, I, I have the standard that I set for myself. And it's a standard I, uh, I, uh, uh, discussed or explained, uh, some three years ago when the recreational marijuana situation uh, first came up, there was a, uh, uh, Facebook group, Northborough Opt Out, uh, which had the effect, if you were a member of that group and you invited a Facebook friend of yours, that friend was automatically joined to the group without first requiring their confirmation. So through a well-meaning neighbor's, uh, uh, invitation, I found myself joined to that group. And I had to quickly post to, number one, uh, alert people that I was there. Uh, number two, to say that my presence neither indicated support or lack of support. Number three, that I wouldn't be engaging in any discussion. So I wouldn't jeopardize any official action I would take in a meeting. And number four, to caution any other board member of any board in town about how they conducted themselves in that venue. So again, to, to not risk being in violation of open meeting law. So, we try to be responsive. Um, we get lots of questions. We do turn over some of this information to town staff and town staff has been working through. They can't necessarily turn it around in a morning or a day or a week. Uh, some of these things are ongoing matters. Uh, the work is in progress. We're trying to address the concerns, but we're not in a position to be engaging in real-time conversations, particularly those where, uh, we're asked to state our position or, uh, you know, this selectman says that, what do the other selectmen think? It's not going to happen in that kind of email or social media venue. Uh, and the reason is we are operating under open meeting law restrictions. So I just want to, to clarify that aspect. Uh, we are working toward these issues. Town staff has done a terrific job thus far, um, and I think has provided some meaningful solutions that will be effective for the concerns that have been expressed. Uh, we'll continue to work toward those, uh, but I think people, perhaps have the wrong expectation about what kinds of conversations they're going to have with us through email. And I just wanted to explain that, uh, we're not as free as, uh, as you might have thought we were to discuss some of these matters in those venues. Um, so with that, uh, I will conclude by just, uh, wishing everyone, uh, whatever your, uh, uh, holiday celebration is, I hope it's a healthy, uh, happy and safe one. And, uh, we look forward to seeing you again on the other side of 2021. So that concludes my report. Uh, John?
Two, two quick things, important things. And I, I know we've got a long agenda still and the hour is, is late. Um, on December fifteenth, late, uh, it usually takes place earlier, but on December fifteenth, the state had their revenue consensus hearing. This is where they bring in the Department of Revenue, uh, local economists, uh, different groups, the Mass Taxpayers Foundation, all to try to get a sense of what we might be looking at for fiscal twenty twenty-two revenues. Um, they were all over the map and every, uh, forecast had about five or six, um, exemption, uh, exceptions and caveats to it. So the Department of Revenue is forecasting, this is, you're going to like this, uh, those of you who've been around for a long time. Negative one to positive eight point eight. I don't know what to do with that. Uh, I talked to my, you know, I sit on the Mass Municipal Association's Fiscal Policy Committee, uh, for the state and I, and I text, uh, the, the legislative liaison at the MMA. I'm like, what, what, what am I supposed to do with that? He goes, I, I, he goes, I don't know what to tell you. Um, but mass taxpayers, uh, they are forecasting about a five, five and a half percent increase in state revenue. I guess the thing that I took away is, uh, in all of them, in order to make these projections, first of all, they use Moody's Analytics, you know, Moody, the bond rating agency. Uh, so they, the, the state subscribes to them and so they do a lot of the analysis for the Department of Revenue. Um, but from there, um, you know, there, uh, they have all these assumptions that we're making. Uh, so the biggest assumption clearly, clearly is that we have a vaccine and it's going to be distributed at a certain rate, uh, in a certain timeframe. Uh, assuming that, the other big assumption is that the federal government's going to come through with another big, uh, uh, stimulus, um, relief package. So those, so all those projections were predicated on really those two major things. So, uh, the good news is, uh, it looks like, uh, the revenues are going to be positive at the state level. Now, what does that mean for Northborough? Jason Little and I have had extensive conversations and I've had extensive conversations with the folks I know at the state level. And it comes down to this. Uh, we're probably the town of Northborough, this is our first glimmer of what state aid might do. Uh, I, I think the positive news is I don't see us budgeting a cut in state aid for fiscal twenty twenty-two. More than likely, on the, on the town of Northborough side, we're probably looking at a level funded state aid. Um, let me just remind everybody for the last, you know, six years as the economy is growing and things were good, what was our state aid increase? One and a half to two percent, right? Those are the good times. We're not now, and then we got into the bad times. So, so now things are improving again. I can't imagine, you know, we're going to see more than a one or two percent increase, uh, at the best. Uh, at the worst, I would hope we'd see level funding. But I think right now, uh, as we start to build our budgets, we're going to start with, uh, based on all the forecasts that we've seen, we're going to start with level funding. And then we'll see where things go from there. Our first true glimmer, other than these forecast, uh, consensus revenue, uh, consensus revenue, um, meeting or hearing, uh, information, that's raw data that they're getting. Now the House and the Senate and the governor get together and they have to kind of agree on what projection they're going to use. And generally speaking, they choose the middle of the road. Not too pessimistic, not too optimistic. But long and short of it is, uh, the governor has to have his budget in, uh, by, uh, the last Wednesday in January, which is January twenty-seventh. That's the first actual sense that we'll get because he has to put in what's our state aid number for the town of Northborough. That's the first chance that we actually get to look at it. But, uh, the good news is, um, based on the improving economy and the vaccine coming out, everybody's assuming we're on the upswing for fiscal twenty twenty-two. Remember, twenty twenty-two starts July one of twenty twenty-one. So by then you saw the projections from Kristen Black, our health agent. We should be well into the vaccination period. There'll be lingering impacts. The economy will still need to recover, but revenue should be growing at that point. Now, the other piece, the big caveat, which it assumes that the state is going, or the federal government's going to give a relief package. Today, Congress is supposed to have voted or be voting on a nine hundred billion dollar relief package. So let me tell you the, the good news and the bad news there, folks. Uh, so that includes nine hundred billion dollars of pandemic relief spending for, uh, direct payments, uh, stimulus checks to, into individuals, uh, an extension of unemployment benefits and additional funding for the paycheck protection program for, for businesses, among other things. Uh, what's not included in the nine hundred million is any money for state and local government. I can't find it. Uh, what did we get? What we got was they're extending the CARES Act money, uh, that was, uh, that was, uh, voted back in April of this year that is expiring on December twentieth, this month. That money was expiring. They've extended it through December of next year. So let me tell you why this is important. We've been having very extensive panic meetings with the school department because the CARES Act money that they're using to clean their buildings and to test their teachers and to test students, that money expires on December thirtieth, right? As of yesterday, it was expiring on December thirtieth. Well, we still have January through the end of the school year to get through and no money to pay for any of that. So now with this, if this vote does come to fruition, we at least have access to that money. And just to remind you, the CARES Act money, we buy personal protective gear, masks, gloves, things of that nature, uh, cleaning our facilities, testing our, and testing our folks. Beyond that, that money is not available to us for general revenue replacement. So I can't spend it on DPW or general costs. So the good news is they released some money. Uh, uh, the bad news is there's really nothing in there for state and local governments, other than extending a program that was going to expire in December, which is helpful to us, very helpful because particularly with the schools are concerned. They were, we, we were just in a panic about how we're going to continue to maintain the extra cleaning, testing protocols that are in place in order for school to continue. So that alleviates that stress from Jason Little's, uh, plate at the moment. Uh, but it still doesn't alleviate our general anxiety over very limited any revenue growth for fiscal twenty twenty-two. So still going to be a very difficult budget, budget year, lots of constraints, but at least we'll be able to pay for direct, direct COVID-related expenses. We're not going to go in the hole for those. So that's what I know, guys. Um, we, uh, at this point, you know, we're going to start putting together our budget projections. We're holding January fourteenth for the financial trend monitoring, crystal ball shaking, uh, event of all the boards and committees to get us some sense of where we're going. Uh, but like you said at the beginning, Mr. Chairman, we're really about a month and a half behind. The information just isn't there. Uh, and so things are going to happen later and faster, uh, with less lead-up discussion, uh, as we would like. But as I've said before, we're, we're going to be okay, but it's going to be a difficult budget year. I don't think we're looking at massive cuts and reductions, but we're going to look at very limited growth. So that's what I'm kind of telling you that, that we're going to be seeing for the upcoming fiscal year. None of which should be a surprise to you. The details of which will be forthcoming over the next couple of weeks. Um, and, uh, that's all I really have to report tonight. Uh, knowing now where this is going, uh, we need to revisit our capital plan and our free cash plan because we didn't know if we were going to have to hit that hard again for one-time revenues to pass things together. So our whole capital expenditure plan and our free cash plan that normally you get that in November. But I haven't given that to you yet because we didn't know. So some good news, a lot of ambiguity. So that's kind of where we stand at. That's going to be the, the model for, the model for, uh, this budget process. It's not horrible, but we don't know. So more, more information to come. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, John. Uh, this brings us to public comment. Uh, and as I mentioned, uh, review the circumstances for public comment. If you're connected, uh, here, you can, uh, let me just check the attendees. Um, it looks like all the attendees are actually connected to the Zoom webinar. Um, so we've got hands raised. Um, you can raise your hand if you wish to be heard. Uh, when we bring you in, uh, to speak, please first state your name and address. Uh, and you will have three minutes. And you will have three minutes to speak. As is the case for public comment, the board is not in a position to, to debate or deliberate a particular item at this time. We will take any input for consideration. If there's a simple factual question the town staff can respond to, we will try to address that. And so going to take them in top to bottom order here. And the first, let me get my, my egg timer. There we go. First is Ann Beckstrom. So Ann, I'm going to connect you. And Ann, are you there?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me okay?
Yes. Could you please state your name and address, please?
Yeah, this is Ann Beckstrom and I live at 152 Bartlett Street in Northborough. And I want to thank you all for listening to us and taking the action that you have so far in reaching out to some of the local businesses around our concerns around the truck traffic. I also noted that, you know, with you having blocked off that little rest area that was there on Bartlett Street, that was great that they weren't parking there, but I was experiencing some of the Amazon trucks like parking right beside my house and idling over the past week or so and making a number of mystery moves, taking a right turn onto Lyman, realizing they made the wrong turn and then backing out onto Bartlett to re-course correct. It was, you know, quite a dangerous situation in the three instances that I saw that happening. Another thing that I'm, I've been noticing is that with the, you know, that parking closed off on Bartlett Street, I think that's forcing some of the trucks now to come and rest on Lyman. So where you are thinking about putting up no parking signs on Bartlett, maybe we would want to consider that same stance for Lyman if that is also a town road. Because they've been parking along Lyman, along our property and I've actually witnessed truck drivers using our woods as a bathroom, which is really, you know, not ideal. And then you had talked about noise and not being able to control noise of the vehicles themselves. Is there, I was wondering if there was any ordinance around Jake Brakes? Because we are, you know, continually hearing trucks use their Jake Brakes, which they really shouldn't need to do that because it's not a major hill or anything. So if there was some ability to act on that and put up, you know, not using Jake Brake notices or something, that would be great. And, and then for trucks coming off Lyman onto Bartlett, are we putting up a sign there at that intersection to say trucks don't go left, go right for 495 and 20 instead of going left?
If I may through the chair.
Yes, John.
Just Ann, if you, if there are trucks parked anywhere, if you could take a snapshot, like we said earlier and, and let us know, then I can follow up and the chief and I can follow up on the, with the facilities. Because they don't want their people parking on the sides of our roads and that's something that we can't address. So, but, but if we need marker number or the number off the truck and that we can follow up on, okay?
Yeah, I did get one the other day. Unfortunately, it wasn't one of those major companies up there, but I did get a picture, a good picture with the license plate and so forth.
Okay. Well, if you let us know, we can follow up on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And we will, I guess I'll have, we'll have staff give some consideration to what parking restrictions might be imposed on that section of Lyman Street as well.
All right. And then what about like the possibility of a sign? If you're coming off Lyman onto Bartlett, would we have signs recommending that trucks not take a left turn, but go right towards Marlboro?
We'd have to look at that. I'm not, I'm not sure that, that's something we can do because that's a public way and, you know, they have the right to, to be on it. But most of the trucks that are coming that way would be heading towards one of these facilities and most of the trucks on Lyman, in my experience of living there, generally go towards Route 9 and get on 495 and access that way. But we will have to look at that.
Yeah, like I was thinking.
I'm not sure that we can have a truck, I'm not sure we can have a truck restriction, turning, turning restriction there. And I'm not sure how prevalent that problem is.
It's pretty, it's prevalent, believe me.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Next up, I have Kristen Wickstead. Kristen, bringing you in now. Hello, Kristen?
Hi.
Hi, can you state your name and address, please?
Yeah, Kristen Wickstead, 2 Sturbrook Lane, Northborough.
Okay.
Thank you. So I just wanted to say that Representative Notten shared that being a member of the Select Board seeps into every minute of your life. I would say getting involved in town affairs as a community representative or just a person who cares about the town finds the same. I respect the fact that all the town boards, the planning board, the school boards and the Select Board are volunteers and I thank all of you for your time. And I also thank everyone in Northborough who pays attention to town politics, many of whom are young moms with little kids. Everyone who volunteers their time to work on everything from school PTOs to the need for a traffic and safety committee in Northborough, because we don't have one, to the study of zoning laws, so we're able to keep, keep our open spaces open and our groundwater clean. I thank all these people and in particular tonight, everyone who has been working on limiting the number of tractor trailers going through neighborhoods and past our local schools. And by everyone, I mean neighbors and clearly town staff and the Select Board. So yes, I really appreciate that. Being an active member of a community doesn't make you a complainer, but makes you part of this team. This work does seep into every minute of your lives as well, whether you're elected officials or not. I feel like tonight, the board, the town staff and the residents have shown how we can work as a team because we do all care. A quick note to that effect on those three incidents on Sturbrook Lane, two were Amazon trucks, one was a UPS truck and none of them were making deliveries. I watched them come and go. Many of the trucks that go down Bartlett Street are not marked FedEx, Dewey Pile or Amazon, which makes me wonder how we can address the problems with, are they other companies? Are they just those companies and they don't, they're not marked? So that might be something that would make a public hearing on traffic and safety warranted and it would make it easier for you to not have to worry about your open meeting law restrictions. Thank you for making the suggestion to have no parking on Bartlett. I encourage all the board members to vote for that. And finally, I'm thanking everyone on this call and everyone who will watch it on YouTube later because there are people in our town who will do that for doing the best for our community. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Next up, I have Millie Milton. Hello, Millie?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, Millie, we can. Can you state your name and address, please?
Millie Milton, 50 Fay Lane.
Yep, proceed.
Okay. I'm actually calling to express my hope that the members of the BOS and the Master Plan Interview Committee will approach their responsibility and duty to the residents of Northborough thoughtfully with their committee member selection. As you all know, this is a committee that will be charged with developing the procedures to carry out the master plan in which the town has invested a significant amount of money and time. Of the 13 seats that are going to be available on this committee, seven will be filled by currently seated members of designated boards and committees and six are for citizens at large. There were at least nine very strong applicants for the six citizen at large seats, three of which were submitted by candidates that currently are or have been long serving members of multiple town boards. With all due respect to the candidates who have given extraordinary amounts of time and dedication to Northborough by filling these very limited at large seats with folks that have already had significant time to serve, not only is missing the intent and the benefits of these at large seats, but the residents of Northborough really lose their opportunity to number one, bring new perspectives, new thoughts and fresh ideas to the town and number two, benefit from them. I would really hate to think that this is a foregone conclusion that up to three of the six seats will be filled by long serving members. And I think it would be a very discouraging precedent to anybody new who may want to get involved with town committees. New perspectives and fresh ideas are some of the words that several members of the BOS ran their campaigns on. And this is the perfect time to put those words into action. This would also be in direct alignment with the recent movement for diversity, to bring more diversity to committees that represent the residents of our town. I hope you'll consider these perspectives when you're making your decisions, if you haven't already done so. And I just want to say thank you so much for your time and your, your investment into our town.
Thank you, Millie.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And next up, I have John Wickstead. Bringing you in, John.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, John. Can you state your name and address, please?
This is John Wickstead, 2 Sturbrook Lane. I only have three minutes and Mr. Peral, you know, that's part of the problem that we have. I respect the fact that you don't want to have conversations with residents over emails. But I can't really have a conversation in three minutes of public comment with no response. So, you know, figuring out some way where the citizens, and there's hundreds of them, who are upset about the Amazon facility and the traffic can have a forum to express their views better than deluging you with emails and better than a three minute, you know, hurried one-way conversation would be helpful. I appreciate all that the town staff has done on behalf of the traffic situation on Bartlett Street. I would point out a couple of quick things. First of all, engaging on a corporate level, you know, is fantastic. The chief engaging on a local level with the local managers. I applaud his efforts and, you know, getting those cement barricades up as fast as they did was really fantastic. I don't think we need to have either engagement or traffic restrictions. I think we need to have engagement and traffic restrictions. And I'm not asking for a traffic restriction on Lyman Street or on Bartlett Street. I'm asking for a traffic restriction on both. We should stop the industrial traffic at the edge of the industrial zone and not let it seep into our residential neighborhoods. Northborough is fundamentally a residential town and allowing the numbers of trucks to go through our residential neighborhoods detracts from everybody's experience. We currently have somewhere between 200 and 240 trucks a day driving down Bartlett Street. That's 200 to 240 tractor trailer trucks. That's on average, one every six to eight minutes. We are about to open a facility which is four times bigger than the existing facilities. Again, I will say that four times bigger than the existing facilities and we already have a truck every six to eight minutes. With respect to our town manager, this is not a future problem. This is a current problem. 240 trucks, a truck every six to eight minutes on Bartlett Street? That's a problem we need to address. If we're creative in our problem solving and we work with Westbro and with Marlborough, we can get a truck exclusion on both Bartlett and Lyman Street and direct the traffic towards two, sorry, to 495. We need to engage with those companies. We also need the traffic laws to back this up. There will be nothing like 10 or 15 tickets for truck exclusion violations. You get the trucks to go the direction that they need to go in. Again, I appreciate all that the town's done on this, but I don't think we should look at this as an either or situation. We should be looking at this as an and situation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Next up, I have Rachel Armstrong. Bringing you in, Rachel.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Can you please state your name and address, Rachel?
Rachel Armstrong, 10 Hemlock Drive.
Thank you.
First, I wanted to thank Scott Sharpentier. I don't know if I'm pronouncing that correctly because I know I was the resident bugging you about that crosswalk. So I appreciate you going back to the, the DOT and giving them further circumstances and I, you know, I hope that they come back with the answer that I think we all want. So I appreciate that. It, it, my confusion with the, with the conversation with the businesses is it sounds like you're leaving it up to the residents to enforce the trucks following the signs. And I know that the police is not staffed to enforce the trucks following what we're asking them to do. But I don't really think it's the job of the residents either to stand and take pictures and send them in and make sure that we get the license plates. So I would certainly hope that we have a better enforcement plan. And again, to, to echo what John and Julianne said, a public hearing where we can have a longer discussion and where we can maybe even talk to the businesses themselves if they want to be such community, you know, a part of the community and have good relations would certainly be very helpful. That's it. Thank you. Thanks so much for your time.
Very good. Thank you, Rachel. And next I have, Suzie Sislicca. Bringing you in, Suzie.
Good evening, everyone. Suzie Sislicca, 8 Emerson Road. I just wanted to say, sorry, I have a, I go off. Sorry, I'm baking, I'm baking pumpkin bread. I've been watching this meeting. I want to echo what Kristen said. I've played Legos with my child. I read storybooks tonight. And now I'm baking Christmas goodies for the family while I watch this meeting. I just want to remind you all, a traffic safety committee could help with all of these problems. I started my email campaign in July because a boy wanted to cross the street. My kids are in third grade and fifth, or third first in preschool and they're gonna be wanting to go to Ellsworth Park soon. I hear about it from other people in the area. I, I don't call to bother. I, I'm on committees. I, I'm on YouTube Live as well. I get it. I'm, I work with the PTO. I volunteer a lot in this town, but I, you haven't even mentioned the traffic safety committee. I've been trying since July. I'd really like a public discussion in 2021. I've offered to write grants. I've offered to help find funding. Spoke with Danielle Gregoire. I want to help. I don't want to be a problem. I don't want to call anymore. On that note, happy holidays, happy new year. Hoping that the vaccine will get things moving soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzie. And next up, I guess I'm not sure. You'll have to introduce yourself when I bring you in. It says Abbey Villa SC. Hello?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Can you state your name and address, please?
Sure. Janine Callahan, 6 Sturbrook Lane.
Thank you.
So I, I want to thank everybody for what they've done so far with the problem on, with traffic safety on Bartlett. But I still think we have a long way to go and this is just the, the beginning. I do have just a couple of comments. And I, I think it was Rachel who just stated the concern about the, the, the residents having to enforce the trucks that are driving up and down Bartlett Street. I, I, you know, I find that hard to believe that we're the ones that are gonna have to keep track of the trucks and chase trucks down and try and get license plates and tag numbers. And I am the one that, that took the pictures of the two Amazon trucks and the UPS truck sitting outside of my house. And no, they were not delivering mattresses. I would not call the cops for somebody delivering mattresses. And this is our fear in this area. And, you know, you put no parking on Bartlett, well, where are they gonna go? And this is our fear in this area. And, you know, you put no parking on Bartlett. Well, where are they going to go? You know, Hemlock, Sterbrooke, Lyman, because they have no place to go. And it was brought to our attention that lots of times these trucks, they're on. A very, uh, they're on a timeline and if they're early, they have to go find someplace to kind of sit and wait and. Our side roads are, they're going to be their waiting area. Um, and that, that's a concern. And again, chasing down trucks. And trying to get plate numbers and tag numbers. That's, that's an issue for me. Um, a traffic safety committee, that would be fantastic. Uh, there's numerous people that I've heard requesting this and. Um, hopefully that comes to fruition. And, uh, it was made, uh, the mention earlier, I don't know who said it, but. You know, not being able to predict the future. And I think what happens is the residents in this area. Um, based on what we're seeing now, we are concerned for the future because there are. Properties for sale and lots for sale in this area and we don't know what's going in there. And for example, you know, a Dewey pile did not have anything in there. In, in what was signed off on what they can move in, that they can't make a left onto Bartlett. And that's a concern for us here and. And, uh, you know, we do need to think about the future. Um, so. Again, thank you for all the work that has been done so far, but I think we still have a really long way to go. Um, and I think starting off with the traffic safety committee would be a fantastic, uh, solution for some of these problems. Thank you and happy, uh, holidays, everybody.
Thank you, Janine.
Mister Chairman, if I could just make a comment, like, we're not asking residents to enforce things. Any more than we ask them to enforce speeding. All we're asking is if you see things and you report it, it will help us do the enforcement. That's all. Uh, we recognize that the town and the police department have a role, uh, to play here. We're not advocating that. Uh, but we're asking for you, for your help. So if you see it, it's just helpful. If you get information for us to be able to follow up and be more thorough in our, in our follow-up on that. So that's all we're asking. Thank you. I appreciate the comment, so.
Very good. Uh, on to new business. Uh, first up, consideration and possible vote for no parking zone along Bartlett Street. Um. John or Scott, uh, I.
Yeah, so this was, uh, part of Scott's presentation initially. Um, as we said, uh, earlier, the board can take this vote. It's really up to you. If you want to, uh, take the vote tonight or if you would like to, uh, take it up at your next. Meeting. I don't think you heard, it's on the agenda. I don't think you're at any opposition. Uh, all you heard were folks that were in favor of it. So. Um, it's really up to the board, uh, if you feel comfortable proceeding with it. Uh, again, this is something that you control. You can make it no parking. You can make it, you can undo it as well. Uh, but obviously we want to move forward in a, in a, in a concerted direction. Uh, we feel pretty strongly as staff that on that end, uh, you heard some of the comments tonight about, you know, uh, stacking and waiting. We feel pretty confident that you really should just post it. And on the other side, where we have these odd enforcement, uh, timelines around the high school, as, uh, you heard from the D B W director. The shoulder doesn't really provide place for, for anybody to be parking safely. There's really no reason people should be parking. On, on the street on Bartlett. So, uh, again, we're recommending, uh, to, that the board take that vote, but. It's up to you if you feel like you want to take more input before you make that decision or if you need more time or more information.
Very good. Thank you, John. Thank you, Scott. Um, comments from the board. Leslie.
Yeah, I don't see a whole lot of reason to wait necessarily. I didn't really. Hear anything that would lead me to believe that we gain anything by waiting or that, that people would be extremely upset by this. Um, I think it cleans it up. If this is a very, I didn't realize how messy this really is. It's kind of complicated. You shouldn't really have to read it and try and figure out what it says. It should be easy. So I'm all in favor of, of cleaning this up and, uh, this is one concrete, so to speak, thing that we can do right now.
Thank you, Leslie. Uh, any other comments? Tim.
Yeah, um, I wa- I was all for the, the parking ban on Bartlett. Um, but as the. If it's just going to, if, if the residents are concerned, they're just going to lead to other parking issues. On, on other streets, why put the parking, parking, parking ban into effect on Bartlett Street?
Through the chair, I, I, I don't know that that's necessarily going to be the case. They're going to, if, if they're, they're going to be parking a tractor trailer. Bartlett is the most, uh, attractive. If we find that the issue is elsewhere, uh, we can address it at that time. But I think really what we talked about at the beginning of the meeting here was, uh, dealing with these facilities directly to. Uh, get ahead of this so that they're not on those roads at all. And we talked about, uh, the geo fencing. And the directions to tell these folks that they're not, they shouldn't be on these, uh, these side roads at all. The, the FedEx facility, the FedEx drivers and, uh, A Dewey piles, I haven't heard anything that they've ever been an issue. Um, that doesn't mean they, they, they can or in the future, but they haven't been. It's really new drivers coming to a new facility. That seems to be the issue and we're working with that facility operator, uh, both at the local and corporate level to, to dissolve that. But we do believe that there is a requ- a need potentially down the, down the future. You don't want to have the tractor trailers stacking up on Bartlett outside of, you know, these newer facilities. So. Believe it's warranted. If something else happens, we can take that next step. Um, but again, staff has reviewed this, D B W director, the police chief, myself. And we feel, uh, we're strongly that we recommending that that be posted, no parking.
But by that, by that logic, you're just, you're just kicking the, the, the problem onto other roads. I mean, that's a, that's, that's the residence point is that if you ban them from parking on Bartlett. They're going to park on Sterb. If you ban them from parking on Sterb, they're just going to park on Hemlock. If you ban them from parking on Hemlock, you're just going to park. Like you're just kicking the can down the road to other streets.
Yeah, we don't believe that that's necess- necessarily the case, but I understand your point. Thank you.
Uh, Julianne.
I have the same concerns that Tim just expressed and, um, I guess the, the big question here is. Where is the closest truck stop for, for drivers to rest? Is there something on Hayes Memorial or, um, or do each of these companies have to have their own? Designated spot for them to rest. I, I, I mean, I, 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 I think maybe what we can do is. Um, vote for no parking on Bartlett Street so that at least we get that in place. But also, you know, address, uh, it's in our purview, isn't it? To say no trucks on, um, on Sterbrooke or Hemlock except for local deliveries?
No, it's not in your purview. It's a public way. Either it's a heavy truck exclusion or it's a, a public way. You can't just say no trucks on a road.
So, so what you're saying is that the legally, the. The trucks can sit on, on Sterbrooke for twenty minutes or thirty minutes?
Well, they're not allowed to idle, but they're, but you can't stop a truck from, uh, a registered truck being on a, on a public way unless it's a heavy. A heavy, uh, commercial, uh, vehicle exemption. Yeah. But they shouldn't be idling. There's a laws preventing them from sitting and idling in a residential area. That's not allowed.
The, the trucks can travel on the public way. There is no heavy commercial vehicle exclusion there. Um, nor is there any parking restriction.
So.
Okay, again, if these facilities are, are actively training and, uh, requiring their drivers. To stay off of the roads and out of the areas that we're asking them to, that should resolve. The, the, the bulk of these, uh, concerns.
So there, there are things that if, if this does get to be a problem as, as Tim articulated. That we, we will just have to put up no parking signs on the side streets.
Potentially that is an option, yes.
Okay.
Uh, Scott, did you have a comment?
Yeah, just, just a procedural comment. It might be, might be for John. So, uh, if we move forward on a, um. Parking ban on Bartlett tonight, is there a period where that is posted for? And notified of, of residents, butters, that sort of thing. I'm just trying to think of, I can't think. Of a, of a resident along Bartlett that would be, what? I can't park on, on my street? But I just, is there, was the procedural notice for everybody that a, that a parking ban is going to go into, into force?
Yeah, and so it's, it's just a, it's a vote of the board and it would be effective upon posting. And it's really just the board's discretion if you would want to, uh, if you'd want to hold off taking the vote and just notify folks. Uh, by mail to let them know that this is something that you're, uh, you're, an action that the board was going to take. Uh, that, that's certainly something you could do. You're not required to do that. And again, we're trying to balance, you know, uh, communicating, but trying to be responsive to the issues that the residents have raised. And as Leslie pointed out, this is a, a concrete thing that you can do, you know, tonight if you so choose. Or you can delay it to your next meeting and we can send letters out just so that people are aware. Um, but there will be a delay, uh, between the vote and the posting because the signs need to be ordered and. Obviously we can't install a sign if there's six feet of snow on the side of the road. So we wouldn't have to wait for that. Uh, as soon as the weather permits, uh, we can, we can install those signs. It's really the board's discretion.
So just to step back and review, um, one concern that had been expressed was that. We barricaded the one area, uh, on, on the industrial portion of Bartlett where trucks had been parking. And, uh, the concern then would be that they might actually be parking on the shoulder or along there anyway. Is that correct? And we were proposing a parking ban to eliminate that potential problem. And then in addition to that, the residential section of Bartlett currently has this ambiguous. Part, part of day, part of week, parking ban that basically aligns with, uh, school. Travel hours. And, uh, outside of those hours, for the most part, parking is permitted otherwise. Um, although that portion, that residential stretch of Bartlett doesn't necessarily accommodate on-street parking anyway.
No.
So, so the proposal, if we were going to institute a parking ban on the industrial portion. Is to take a look at the residential portion as well and kind of decide, does it make to, make sense to just impose a full-time parking ban? As opposed to the piecemeal thing that's there right now.
To be consistent, the last thing you'd want to do is drive a, you know, not that I can ever imagine a tractor trailer deciding that. The residential end of Bartlett is an appropriate place to stop. If, you can't fit a car on the shoulder. You're going to have trouble fitting anything larger than that.
Right. Um, okay, I, I guess, uh. I, I would not have any objection to taking action tonight. But I would like to get a sense of the board to see if people feel they want to, um. Postpone action and invite input from the residents on Bartlett. Julianne?
So, so if we, if we postpone the vote to our next meeting. That would be a public hearing where people could point out some of these. You know, possibilities that might arise as, as Tim pointed out.
I suppose so. Um, I, I guess I'm trying to understand exactly what problem we're trying to solve. If, if we're trying to solve the problem that trucks may try to park along the industrial stretch of Bartlett. Anyway, um, we're, you know, that's going to be a concern or a problem. Um, and a parking ban helps to alleviate that.
Right, but, but I, I'll, Tim, well, Tim has a hand up, okay?
Tim?
I'm just restating some of the issues that the residents brought up when they called in. One of the, the, the residents expressed concern about trucks parking if they're, they're not allowed to park on Bartlett. Now they're going to start parking on Sterbrooke Lane and Hemlock. That was expressed as a concern. The other concern that the residents expressed is they don't want, or they don't want the undue burden of having to help out with enforcement. They, they, they don't feel that, 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 that should be part of their. Responsibility to, to help out with enforcement. So if those are two of the issues that the residents have, they should be considered. And if, if by having the, 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 the ban on Bartlett. Means that trucks are going to park on Sterb and the residents are actually going to have to help out enforcement and those are the concerns.
Right. So the question is in part, um, if we're talking about large trucks. That would be parking on Bartlett if it wasn't banned. Are they really going to turn into a residential street and park there? Um, I guess I'm a little bit skeptical that that would be the circumstance.
I, I agree with you, but those are the concerns that the residents express.
Yeah.
I'm just restating what was expressed by the, the, the residents in there from the, the.
Yes.
Six or seven people that called in, they all expressed very similar concerns. And if those are their concerns, well. The only remedy to that that we have in front of us is to not do the parking ban on Bartlett. Cause then if we don't have the parking ban, then they can park on Bartlett. They don't park on Sterb and they don't have to do any enforcement because. There's nothing to enforce.
But I'm not sure that we're trying to encourage trucks to park on Bartlett either. Uh.
Right, but you, you see like their concerns are. Byproducts of having the parking ban.
Yeah, I, yeah, yes, yes. Uh, any further input from town staff, John or Scott?
Yeah, I would just say, uh, the recommendation of staff is to park, is to post Bartlett, no parking. Work with the, work with the facilities out there to, to, um, uh, through the management there to educate their drivers. And to, uh, make requirements to their drivers to stay off the side roads and to not use Sterb to park. Uh, and, uh, and then take it from there. If, if a truck is on there and we are notified. We can follow up with it and, and, uh, and deal with it. But I, I think, um, value to post Bartlett. Then nobody should be surprised if a truck is parked on the side of the road in Bartlett. Because it's allowed. I'm not, not quite sure what else to do. Again, our truck's going to go all the way down and park on Hemlock. I would be very surprised, but again, you know, I don't know if I've ever seen a truck parked. You know, down that far. Um, but it's, uh, you know, Sterb is an issue, Sterbrooke, and we could take that up specifically with the, uh. With the facilities out there and, uh, and, uh, and, and resolve it that way. The only alternative is to park, is to, you know, park, uh, post Sterb, no parking, but, you know, I think residents want to be able to park in front of their house. Oh, so. None of these solutions are perfect. This is, you know, this is a, this is a, a, um. If you're going to do it, we, I believe we should do it before, uh, the Amazon facility opens up and so have it posted. And then, you know, whatever happens after that, we're going to have to, to, to continue to manage the, manage the, uh, situation.
If I may?
Yes, Chief.
They already are parking on Bartlett Street past where we've put the, the, uh, granite, uh. Obstructions. They've just further, they've gone further east, uh, towards the north on the street. And they started making a new parking area. Plus there's hunters that park along the side of the road. And I had a conversation with a business owner on the opposite side of the street that called me because he wanted to complain about tractor trailers that were stopping on his side of the street. Facing up the hill towards Amazon. Um, and I had mentioned to him that there was a potential for a, uh, stops, I, uh, no parking. Restriction being placed on the street and he was extremely happy to hear that. Um, as far as folks feeling like they have to chase down trucks, that's absurd. The police are an extension of the public. If we don't have the pu- public's cooperation reporting crime and helping to, uh, uh, solve problems in their neighborhoods. You're not going to, we're not going to solve it on our own. Uh, so we're simply asking that if you're having a problem, call it and report it to us. Yes, if you can get a license plate, that would be nice because then I can tell you that if it's an Amazon truck. I can go up and see the operations manager and I'll give them the name of the, because one of the things you have to keep in mind with Amazon is they're not Amazon drivers. The boxes are owned by Amazon, but the tractor trailers that are being, that are towing them, the tractors are privately owned with independent truck drivers. They're contract drivers to A- Amazon. And I have been assured by him that if I take the, if I find out who the drivers are, he will take it up with them and they come in in the next trip. There are other ways to handle truck enforcement. Uh, but, uh, as far as, you know, the, one of the concerns was trucks parking on Lyman Street. Will call us because a truck parking on Lyman Street is not leaving a ten-foot width for vehicles to pass. Will call us because a truck parking on Lyman Street is not leaving a ten-foot width for vehicles to pass. It's an illegally parked vehicle and it's obstructing public travel. If we don't get called, we can't go down there and tell them he has to leave or get a citation for obstructing travel. Most truck drivers don't want to get a, a commercial driver's license infraction because two of them in a year will cost them their driver's license. So enforcing truck traffic is not a big issue. Uh, it's, it's, uh, it's, it's well in the interest of, of commercial licensed drivers to, to, uh, be on the safe side and comply with what we want. And I, I, I really, we can't, we cannot do it alone. I have three patrolmen that work in the day shifts. And I've got fifteen thousand plus other people that think their street is just as equally important as Bartlett Street. And, you know, I've heard people say they want continuous import enforcement on Maple Street. Well, people on Church Street want continuous enforcement. People on Hudson Street want continuous enforcement. We do our best, we balance what we can do, but if we don't know what's going on and we don't know a truck is there, I cannot help the residents. And I can only implore them to please call. I'm not asking them to chase down trucks and, and, and stop vehicles. I heard someone say that. Uh, that's absolutely not the case and that's my piece. Thank you. I appreciate it. I really appreciate their frustration because I'm just as frustrated because I want to go down there and do something for them right now. But I have to live within the constraints of the law, you know? Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Uh, Julian?
Question for the chief. Why, why exactly are these? Um, trucks being parked? Is it they have to wait for their turn or they're resting? What is the?
Well, there, there could be a wealth of issues. A lot of them, uh. Depending on how far they're driving, they have DOT elements on how many hours they can drive and they have to stop. They have to complete logbooks and oftentimes they'll do that after making a delivery. Uh, their people, they sometimes need to eat lunch. Um, some of them want to pull over on the side of the road and take a rest because of their DOT hours. Uh, those are usually the trucks that are parked overnight and they've got a sleeper cab on the back. Uh, I don't think you'll find many of those type of vehicles are going to be servicing. Uh, Amazon because most of the trucks coming in there will be more of a short distance because we're only a sort facility. Trailers in, boxes in, sorted, putting another trailer and deliver it to, uh, uh, further down their food chain towards the last mile, uh, delivery. Um, the fact of the matter is, if, if it's posted no parking, it gives us some teeth. And the more citations, parking citations that we issue, I think the word will get out. Uh, because they talk, they'll have, you know, CB radios in the truck. And before it gets out that, you know, the Northborough Police are aggressively, uh, 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 enforcing that no parking areas down there. And, you know, any other motor vehicle laws, then it, it just, it bodes well for the residents.
Yeah, I, um. Based on what I'm hearing, what I've heard from residents, in some ways, this is kind of a lesser of evil situation. You know, we're hearing people are upset about, you know, Bartlett and then. Come up with some sort of solution and then there's something else they're worried about. I think we need to. Uh, try and address this, you know, by starting with a parking ban on Bartlett. I also, over the years, if I hear a recommendation from town staff, town administrator and a police chief. Who am I to say, no, that's not a good idea? We've heard from residents, we've heard about all the various issues that they're concerned about. I personally feel that it's within our good judgment as a board of selectmen to make a decision this evening to try and. Get the ball rolling on something concrete that we can start to address here. And if there are other. Kind of ripple effects from this, then we can deal with this as, as we go. That's my opinion at this time.
Okay. Uh, Scott Rogers, any? Opinion?
I'm ready to go. Let's vote. Let's make a motion.
Okay. For purposes of consideration, I will entertain a motion.
Mister Chair, I move the board vote to amend Northborough Code Chapter nine ninety-two zero-three-zero. Parking prohibited on certain street to prohibit parking on both sides of Bartlett Street. From Route twenty, Main Street, easterly to the town line without any time or day restriction.
Uh, moved by Tim Kalin, seconded by Leslie Rutan. Uh, any final comments or? Consideration by members of the board? Uh, Leslie?
I'd like to thank the chief for his comments. Thank you very much.
Good. Thank you, Leslie. Um, I'll just offer my own personal comment. I think that, uh. With the recommendation of staff, there's a benefit to be gained by acting now. If we do find there are adverse effects, uh, secondary effects that emerge from this, we can certainly follow up and, and revise the approach if needed. Uh, so with that, this is a roll call vote. Scott Rogers?
Aye.
Julian Hirsch?
Aye.
Tim Kalin?
Aye.
I'm out of order there. Uh, Leslie Rutan?
Aye.
And I will vote aye as well. So the motion carries unanimously and, uh. Appreciate the effort of town staff to, uh, give us the information, um. And, uh, we'll see how that proceeds. Uh, next item is acceptance of deed for property located at sixty-one and sixty-five West Main Street, Northborough for general municipal purposes. Including but not limited to a fire station. Uh, John, you want to just give a quick?
Sure, briefly, um, as you know, we have, uh, a closing on the, uh, sixty-one, sixty-five, uh. West Main Street, which is Yule Pierce Gas Station across from Dunkin' Donuts. Um, so we have a closing on that, uh, scheduled for December twenty-ninth. Uh, the structures are mostly down at this point at the seller's expense. Uh, and any remediation that needs to be done on that site is at the seller's expense. Tonight, you have, uh, at the request of Town Council, uh, a vote for the acceptance of the deed. So this is a procedural issue, so you would vote to accept it, sign off on it. And then, uh, so you'll have to come in, uh, uh, at some point this week and sign the physical documents. And then Town Council will hold that and all the other documents. Uh, and when all the work is completed, uh, as, uh, required under the purchase and sell agreement with the seller. All the documents would then would be, uh, would be, uh, transferred and the closing would take place on the twenty-ninth. So tonight, we need you to. Accept and approve, um, the, uh, deed and then to execute it in order to move, uh, forward to that closing date of December twenty-ninth.
Very good. Thank you, John. Uh, do I have a motion?
Mister Chair, I move the board vote to approve and sign the acceptance for the West Main Street property as prepared by Town Council. The acceptance is to be held in escrow by Town Council until such time as the demolition and other work is complete and the closing occurs.
Second.
Moved by Leslie Rutan, seconded by Scott Rogers. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none. This is a roll call vote. Scott Rogers?
Aye.
Julian Hirsch?
Aye.
Leslie Rutan?
Aye.
Tim Kalin?
Aye.
And I vote aye, carries unanimously. So, John, uh, Diane will notify us when the documents are available to sign at Town Hall?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, next up, uh, renewal of selectmen's licenses for calendar year two thousand and twenty-one. John?
Yeah, so, uh, in your packet is a list of all the renewals for, uh, liquor licenses, um. Uh, and, uh, auto dealer licenses, class one and class two. They've all been inspected, uh, by the police department and the, uh, building inspector. Uh, with the exception of, uh, Texas BBQ, which is not renewing their license, uh, this year. Uh, otherwise, uh, all taxes are paid up and all of the facilities have been inspected. Uh, and this list is, um, uh, for your consideration tonight for renewal.
Thank you, John. Uh, do I have a motion?
Just a quick question?
Yes, Scott.
Uh, John, are there, there are maximums for the different license types that are set by the state?
Yes, there are quotas based on population, uh, specifically for liquor licenses.
Okay, and that's, I would apply to the. And, and are the common victualers licenses, is, is there a, is there a max on that?
No, there's no quota on those. It's just the liquor licenses that we have quotas based in statute.
Okay, great, thanks.
Sure. Uh, I'm sorry, Julian, did you have a motion?
I, I do, um, but I, I have a question also. Jason, you usually ask this question just to, um. Double check with the police chief that there's no concerns or issues with any of the licenses that we're approving?
Yeah, as I said, the police have checked, uh, all the facilities have been inspected and everything has been signed off on.
Okay.
Yep.
Would you like?
Yes, please.
Mister Chairman, I move the board vote to approve the renewal of the annual licenses for the calendar year two thousand and twenty-one. As indicated on the two thousand and twenty-one license renewals list.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Uh, moved by Julian Hirsch, seconded by Scott Rogers. Uh, once again, a roll call vote if there's no further questions. Or comments, and it does not seem to be. Uh, Scott Rogers?
Aye.
Julian Hirsch?
Aye.
Leslie Rutan?
Aye.
Tim Kalin?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, carries unanimously. And, uh, similarly, John, uh, Diane will notify us when those are available for signing?
Yes.
A lengthy list of signatures. Uh, next up, uh, interview subcommittee recommendations for appointments to the master plan implementation committee. For purposes of discussion, uh. Do I have a motion?
Mister Chair, I move the board vote to appoint to the. Appoint to the following residents for stagger terms to the master plan implementation committee as recommended by the interview subcommittee. Fran Backstrand for one year, Eugene Kennedy, one-year term, Gene Cahill, two-year term. Rick Leaf, two-year term, John Campbell, three-year term, Dario Damari, three-year term.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, moved by Tim Kalin, seconded by Leslie Rutan. Um, I, I just had a technical observation here, um. We're doing these appointments at the end of December two thousand and twenty, uh, presumably this would start in two thousand and twenty-one early. Uh, and I guess the. The, uh, times that the terms run, typically we have our terms of committee appointments lined up to expire at the close of. Town meeting, typically the end of April. Um, here in making these appointments now, uh, I guess I'm wondering, do we want to? Provide that, uh. That adjustment in effect so that these terms run. From now through a period plus four months or something like that, you know what I mean? I wouldn't expect the one-year terms to expire this coming April, I guess is what I'm saying. Uh, so, so my question is, when do the terms expire? Or do we want to align them with our typical timings, uh, that, that tend to run April to April?
That's a good point, Jason. Um, does it, and would? Would we, would it cause any problem if we gave the extra four months? So it would be this, this first round out. The one-year term would expire April of two thousand and twenty-two, the three-year term would expire of April of twenty twenty, whatever it is. Would, if we just make it, align it with, with April, but it'll take. The committee a little bit to get started and up and running so to make sure everybody gets their full first-year term?
Yeah, that, that, that's my. My expectation. It's going to take a month or two to get up and running and then it's really. A year's worth of service we're looking to get from these people, uh, initially. Um, and so I guess I would. Ask whether we want to amend these to be, uh. Uh, uh, term to expire in. Uh, whatever, uh, uh, close of town meeting of two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four. Something to that effect. And then, you know, these are one, two, or I'm sorry, these are, upon expiration, these are renewed for three years.
Right.
Terms, right. Uh, but I'm the chairman and I can't amend the motion, so I need somebody to.
I was going to give that a go. Uh, so Mister Chair, I move to amend the motion.
Yes.
To include the expiration month and year. For the one-year term to be April of two thousand and twenty-two. The two-year term to be April twenty-twenty-three, and the three-year term to be April twenty-twenty-four.
Thank you.
I would stop at that.
Uh, amendment moved by Scott Rogers, seconded by Leslie Rutan. Any discussion? Hearing, uh, Julian?
Yeah, so, um, I, 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 I take to heart what, um, Millie Milton. Commented on and.
Julian, at this moment, we're just discussing the amendment, which is how the terms should run.
Oh, okay, okay, sorry.
Yep. If there's no discussion or no further discussion on that point, uh. Uh, we'll take the roll call vote for the amendment. As proposed by Scott Rogers, seconded by Leslie Rutan. Scott Rogers?
Aye.
Julian Hirsch?
Aye.
Leslie Rutan?
Aye.
Tim Kalin?
Aye.
Jason Pro, aye. So we have adjusted the terms, uh, as initially proposed. Back to the discussion of the motion as amended. Uh, any comments? And Julian, you had a comment?
Yes, I do. And so I, I, um. I tend to agree with a lot of what Millie Milton said in her comments in public and during public comment. And while I have the utmost respect for Fran Backstrom, Rick Leaf and John Campbell, and I'm really grateful for all the work that they've done truly. Um, my concern is that choosing three people who have, have sat on multiple boards. Is that we fall into the trap of choosing the same people over and over again. And, uh, you know, I, I've tried to, um, research and find what's a really good way to. To choose citizens at large and, and what is a resident at large anyway? And in the. Massachusetts Municipal Association, the, um, the Handbook for Selectmen. There isn't a lot of guidance there, but there is a, a couple of sentences that made me pause. So it, I'll read. It says, "Some selectmen complain that their town government is like musical chairs with the same people filling different seats." "Getting new people to serve on town boards and committees is essential to the vitality of a town, but it doesn't happen by chance." This, I think, is, um, it occurs a lot in towns where you don't have volunteers stepping up. In our case, we do have volunteers stepping up to, to kind of spread, spread the opinions and. Um, wealth of knowledge around. So, and my second point is that it was addressed that we do not need a citizens advisory committee. Because the master plan implementation committee is going to overlap that. And in the citizens advisory committee. Description, it says, "Members shall represent a cross-section of town population and opinion." So I think to get a true, you know, a, a broader perspective and, um. A, a new perspective. Uh, it's, I, I would have to say that, um. Since we have candidates, that, that I would have to vote. I, I, I would have to consider voting no on, on this, this motion.
Okay, thank you, Julian. Uh, any other comments? Leslie?
Yeah, um, I think that Tim and I did a, a good job. Um, we put the note, the notice was put out there for the community. Anybody was welcome to apply. And we interviewed all the people that applied and I think it was a very fair process. And I think that the makeup of that committee is going to be terrific. I think it makes a lot of sense to have some people who have some history and some. Knowledge of, of what's going to be discussed. And we have some three, three new people on there. Uh, there's, you know, we did not commit to having a committee full of all new people, no matter what. Our job is to make sure that we create a committee that hopefully does include some new people. But that also includes people who can kind of anchor the committee a bit with their previous knowledge and the work that they've done in town. I am also very appreciative of people who have put a lot of volunteer time into this community. And it is going unappreciated. There is a lot of work, a lot of time, without any pay, with a lot of headache. And I think that it's time to be more grateful and more appreciative of what they have to offer. And they have a lot to offer for this particular committee with their particular knowledge base. So that we have a nice makeup of new committee members, uh, board liaisons and some other committee members. Who have some knowledge to offer. So I'm very pleased with the, the people. I don't want to speak for Tim, but I'm very pleased with the people. So I'm very pleased with the, the people. I don't want to speak for Tim, but I'm very pleased with the people that we're bringing forth this evening. And I think it's a wonderful opportunity for this committee to have an impact. It's a huge project. It goes way back. Um, a lot of work has been put in by the implementation subcommittee or the master plan subcommittee. Um, the master plan committee and the master plan itself is a huge part of our community. So I think that we need to have the kind of people that, that we're putting forth this evening, and I'm very happy about what we decided on. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Uh, any other comments? Tim?
Uh, I'm, I'm just surprised that, that experience is a bad thing. Um, that people consider people that, 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 um, can get on a committee and, and hit the ground running, really make a, an impact from day one. Um, especially for, for something like this committee that's gonna work with all the various boards and committees in town. This isn't a, a single-issue committee. This, this has reached into every aspect um, in every corner of the community. So it's to have people that have experience working with the people in town that understand the processes, understand how things, things work in the town, have been involved in the master plan process. Why wouldn't you want people like that on the committee? Like, that's, that's what I can't, I can't under, understand the, 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 the the pushback on having people with experience. Um, you know, and, and the people that are speaking out against, against experience, um, you know, quite frankly, I, I hope they hold themselves to that same standard. If you think experience is bad, well, if you have experience, I hope you hold yourself to that same standard. Um, it's, it's just unfortunate. Um, i- i- in my opinion, that, that, that people are frowned upon because they've put time and effort into this community and they have experience in, in can add value. Um, a- a- and, and it's not appreciated. Um, or it's undervalued. I shouldn't say it's not appreciated. It's, it's significantly undervalued. Um, you know, we, we put time and effort into interviewing people. Um, three people with experience, three new people. Um, we appointed five people, brand-new voices, new blood, however you want to phrase it, to the diversity and inclusion committee. Um, you know, we, we take that aspect of our job on the interview, uh, subcommittee very seriously. Um, so to have a balance between people that are experienced and people that are new, I think gives the town the best people for the committee to do the job at hand. And that's why we picked who we picked.
Thank you, Tim. Uh, Scott, any comments? Uh, you're muted, Scott.
For me, looking over the candidates, uh, I don't necessarily see it as new people versus same people. Uh, actually, to pivot on what Tim said, I see a lot of experience in the slate of nominees that are put before us. Um, and, and, and some of that experience is in a new name to me. Um, but that, those folks represent a lot of experience as well. So for me, I'm very comfortable. There was a lot of great applicants. I, I don't see any issues with this, this slate of recommended appointments.
Thank you, Scott. Um, my own observation is that, um, it, it, in a sense, there's a, a a, a balance here of what I looked, looked at and recognized as three candidates who've had a lot of active involvement in the town. Two of those candidates served on the steering committee and have that experience and knowledge of that, uh, process to understand how the master plan came into the shape it was and, and what the uh, implementation aspects of it are already proposed to be because the master plan does include, uh, essentially, uh, an implementation checklist uh, based on the recommendations that were arrived at with some prioritization, some cost estimate in a qualitative way. Um, so the, the knowledge of those individuals, um, having participated through that point, I think that experience carrying forward into the implementation committee makes a lot of sense. Um, the other three candidates that we have are people who, for the most part, haven't served uh, um, in, uh, on a committee. But they each have, as I look at their resumes, pretty uh, very significant and extraordinary and relevant experience and credentials to apply specifically to this problem of grappling with the implementation plan. Um, they have an architect, we have, uh, somebody with, uh, extensive experience in, uh, uh, town planning, uh, and, and, and another with, uh, um, you know, environmental, uh, uh, background. Um, I think those are, uh, you know, valuable skills, valuable experience, valuable expertise that bears directly on the notion of the master plan and its implementation. Uh, I think these people can be very helpful. And I'll note that the, through the proposed, uh, staggered terms, we've kind of distributed each of those in the timeline as well. You have an experienced person and a new person for the one-year term, experienced person and a new person for the two-year term, experienced person and a new person for the three-year terms. So there's some distribution in that sense, uh, that some of these terms will be expiring earlier and there may be some consideration whether someone is interested in being reappointed and continuing or whether that space will open up for, for some other candidate to, uh, to fill. So, um, I understand the concern. I, and I agree that the other applicants um, were very capable people, but I don't feel that their specific backgrounds or expertise were as directly applicable to the master plan implementation than the skills and experience and expertise of the people who are being proposed here. So that's where I stand on this. Julian?
Yeah, I would just like to correct the, um, the notion that anyone doesn't feel that experience is not worthwhile. Uh, obviously, experience is crucial, but I think what, what what the prob, the issue is for me is, is balance. And you have, it's gonna be a committee of thirteen people, seven people already have experience by nature of the committees that they're representing. And, and, and even the committees that they are on. And you, so, so that's one part of why I have concerns about this, this slate of, um, nominees. But the other thing is, is that if we're really going to honor what we said, that the master plan implementation committee is going to fulfill the mission of the citizens advisory committee.
Julian, I, I, I think you
No one has ever said that.
Strewing something there. The master plan implementation committee was something that was expected and planned to emerge following the master plan steering committee's work. There was a proposal by some people to resurrect the citizen advisory board. And in looking at what the, the description of that board was, it did relate to master planning and planning in general. And as we said, it's a thirty-five-year-old, uh, uh, definition that predates some of the professional planning expertise of a planning department in our municipal operations. So it isn't that, uh, the definition of the citizen advisory board has any bearing at all on the definition we apply to the implementation committee. We're just saying there's no point in resurrecting the citizen advisory board because it was defined to operate, uh, in some sense with respect to master plan and making recommendations. We're not taking our cue from the citizen advisory board about how the master plan implementation committee should be composed.
So that means that when we said we don't, so then I would, I would say that, um, our reasons for saying no citizens advisory board, it, then those issues are still on the table. If it's only the master plan duties that, that we said no to that, and, and actually, we never even really had a discussion about that, so.
We have not discussed the citizens advisory board.
Right.
We have discussed the master plan implementation committee.
Right.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. This is a roll call vote for the motion as amended. Uh, Scott Rogers?
Aye.
Julian Hirsch?
No.
Uh, Leslie Rutan?
Aye.
Tim Kalin?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. Uh, motion carries four in favor, one opposed. John, I assume that Diane will be sending out, uh, notices to the, um, applicants?
Yes.
Yeah. And, uh, at some point in the near future, we will be, uh, uh, organizing, uh, an initial meeting.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, congratulations to the candidates who were selected. Uh, thanks to all candidates, all, uh, people who applied. Uh, we appreciate that. Um, and as always, uh, we encourage everyone to who's interested in serving in some capacity to examine the open positions on boards and committees in town and consider, uh, volunteering uh, for those spots. Uh, next item is execution of cemetery deed one-one-zero-eight, one-one-zero-nine, one-one-one-zero, and one-one-one-one.
Hey, Mister Chair, I've got a, I've got a motion for you. How about, uh, the board to vote to execute cemetery deeds? One-one-zero-eight, one-one-zero-nine, one-one, one-zero, and one-one-one-one.
Second.
Moved by Scott Rogers, seconded by Tim Kalin. Roll call vote. Scott Rogers?
Aye.
Julian Hirsch?
Aye.
Leslie Rutan? Tim Kalin?
Aye.
And I vote aye, carries unanimously. John, any other business to come before the board?
Yes, uh, given the hour, my suggestion, uh, is to, uh, postpone your executive session this evening. Actually, staff had a meeting today with council regarding this matter, and he will be available to speak with you at your January eleventh meeting. So, uh, there's really, there's really no pressing need to do it tonight, given it's after eleven o'clock.
So it is, uh.
Unless anybody has a desperate need to continue meeting this evening after four hours.
No objection. Uh, in that case, if there's, by agreement to the board, no executive session, no matter to pursue this evening. Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mister Chair, I move that we adjourn.
Okay.
Moved by Tim Kalin, seconded by Scott Rogers. Uh, roll call vote. Scott Rogers?
Aye.
Julian Hirsch?
Aye.
Leslie Rutan?
Aye.
Tim Kalin?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Uh, so we are adjourned. Thank you to everyone for staying on this late into the evening. And, uh, best, uh, best for the holidays. Uh, have a healthy, happy, safe holiday, and we'll see you in two thousand and twenty-one.
Have a good one to you all.